I'll let you know on the YouTube this slide.
Hi, Joe.
Hello. All right, we are live.
Thank you, Clerk. We are live. Welcome, everyone. I called this meeting to order. We have given everyone ample time to join us. Wanted to thank everyone that's joined us on YouTube for participating and listening to today's comments, and also to those that are going to be presenting and testifying today. And I wanted to make sure that we give a warm welcome to, I mean, I would say, a legend in the Connecticut General Assembly, someone that has been a longtime friend and colleague and partner and mentor our new co-chair of the Aging Committee, Senator Miller, who has a long record of helping and protecting and supporting seniors, even as a few months ago, she collected, I think it was literally hundreds and hundreds of pounds of food to a senior apartment complex during COVID, because she recognized the food insecurity that was happening in her own district. So she is a legend in this work and a legend in the legislature. And I'm so glad to have her joining her in this committee and this work. So I just wanted to welcome her in a proper greeting and then give Senator Miller an opportunity to speak first.
Thank you, Representative. Hello, everyone. I am pleased to be a member of the committee. As Representative stated, that seniors mean a lot to me, and I feel that they paid their dues. And it's our responsibility as a society to make sure that they're taken care of. So I'm excited. I know, I think our last meeting is tomorrow, but I am excited to be a part of this committee, to be the co-chair of this committee, and I'm looking forward to the bill that we're going to pass out of the committee's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Just a quick correction. Our last meeting is Thursday, not tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And thank you, Clerk. Just go over the rules again really quickly for everyone's edifice, just to make sure we are all on the same page together. If you have any difficulties, please either raise your hands or reach out to our Clerk, Joe Perkis. And Joe, once again, thank you for your work in keeping us all organized and ready to go during these meetings. For our legislators, please raise your hand in the signifying and participant box. Please don't use the chat. You can use that raise your hand feature. Or if that does not work, if you raise your hand too, we will make sure that we call on you to make sure that we can support you in these efforts. For all of our speakers, please introduce yourselves first and identify where you're from or what organization you were coming from. That would be super helpful. We do have a strict three-minute time period, which will start immediately following your introduction of yourself. While we all do have freedom of speech, it's not also, it's not the freedom of consequences. So please keep this PG friendly and kid-friendly for all those watching at home and on YouTube. We do want everyone to be passionate, but I think we can be passionate while also being mindful of our language. Please be mindful of hearing your name called. We want to make sure that we can call anyone expeditiously so we can keep this meeting moving. And I think that is it. I think those are all the things that we need. Oh, and also for our legislators, please refrain from using the chat feature. That just keeps things a lot easier and clean to make sure that we all can keep this meeting in the public. So with that, I also wanted to give an opportunity for our minority leader to speak first. Did either Senator Kelly or Representative Wilson have anything to share?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just say briefly that I'm glad that we're moving along and having a hearing here today. It'd be interesting to hear comments on these six bills that are on the agenda. And let's get started. Thank you, and happy to have Senator Miller as our guide here and hope to hear from you soon during this discussion this afternoon. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Representative Wilson. Did either of our vice chairs want to share anything?
Welcome, welcome, welcome. This is Rep Hughes, and let's get started. The public is here and ready.
All right. Any other questions from our members? Seeing none, I will turn it over to our new co-chair, Senator Miller.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my new button. So we first have, the first speaker of the day is going to be Senator Formica. Senator Formica, are you on?
I am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great seeing you.
Thank you very much. And let me be the first to welcome you to the Senate. And I look forward to working closely with you around the circle as we move forward. And congratulations on your, on your election.
Thank you, Senator, and the feeling is mutual.
Thank you. So Chairs Miller and Phillips, Ranking Members Kelly and Wilson, and the distinguished members of the Aging Committee, I am Senator Paul Formica, and I'm submitting testimony in support of the provisions of Senate Bill 975 that seek to prevent the social isolation of senior citizens who reside in nursing homes and that will respect their rights to family contact and privacy, as well as the provisions of House Bill Number 6552 to improve access to virtual connections between long-term care facility residents and family members. The effects of this pandemic have been devastating for Connecticut's oldest residents, both physically and emotionally. As a member of the Governor's Nursing Home and Assisted Living Facility Oversight Advisory Working Group, I have had the opportunity to get a much closer view of the incredible challenges these facility residents are facing, plus the numerous interactions that I've had, as I'm sure we all have had, with family members of senior constituents. I appreciate the bipartisan work of this Aging Committee in raising these bills, which enable needed protections for long-term care facility residents. These individuals have the same rights as all other state residents, including the right to use technology of their choice for virtual visitation, and if needed, to file grievances for violation of those rights. Seniors in nursing homes or assisted living facilities have been suffering from isolation. Completely sheltering in place, not allowing residents to go outside and not providing the technology infrastructure for virtual isolation, residents face the number of additional challenges lacking exercise, interaction, and the social-emotional benefits of connecting with loved ones. Far too many loved ones in our nursing homes lost their lives to COVID-19. We also cannot ignore the impact continued social isolation had on the death toll and the health and well-being of vulnerable nursing home residents. I very much appreciate this committee taking these issues seriously and working together on solutions. Thank you for your continued support and for the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you, Senators. Senator, are there questions from the members?
Representative Boelinski has his hand up.
Representative Boelinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome. It's a pleasure to work with you. Senator Formica, I want to thank you for your work on the task force and for your advocacy on this. I encourage you to use every resource in your power to assert the rights of individuals living in assisted living and nursing home environments so that the isolation and neglectful activities can become something of a thing of the past. In case you don't know, my mother, coming up on her first anniversary of my mother's passing, she did not die of COVID-19. She died of the lockdown and neglect. And what started as dehydration for lack of proper care eventually culminated in the loss of her life. I'm at your disposal in any way that you ever need my help, Senator. Thank you very much. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Representative. And I know I didn't get a chance to personally give my condolences. And you're losing your mom, you lost your father a year or so before that. And so I know it's very difficult for you to, you know, to testify in favor of the bill. So I wish you the best.
Thank you, Senator. You did, you reached out for each one of those events. And it means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else, Mr. Clerk?
There are no other questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator, for testifying today and submitting your testimony.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I too would like to share your thoughts and concerns for Representative Boelinski on a very difficult time. And I know that it's, to lose a family member is most devastating, but the advocacy that you're working on in this bill, Representative, I think will go a long way to preventing a lot of this happening, a lot of that happening again. So my condolences again, and thank you for the comments. And again, Senator, thank you for the opportunity to speak before your great committee today.
Thank you. And if I could add, this was a very difficult time for all of us to see our seniors pass away in the manner that they did. And as Representative Boelinski stated, it's the isolation. I mean, even if you're not ill, isolation is not a good place to be in. And so I thank you for your advocacy on this issue. And I'm hoping that we can get it passed and made into law. So thank you very much again for that.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. We next have Painter.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Miller, Representative Phillips, Senator Kelly, Representative Wilson, and the distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Mairead Painter, and I am the State Long-Term Care Ombudsman. Thank you for this opportunity to testify before you today regarding several bills, as I know the committee has worked so hard to address the isolation and acknowledge the social and emotional needs of our long-term care residents. The first bill I'd like to offer testimony on today is Bill Number 6552, An Act Concerning the Rights of Residents in Long-Term Care Facilities to Use Technology of Their Choosing for Virtual Connections to Family, Friends, and Other Persons. I absolutely support this bill. For years, we've told residents that their room is their home. And because of this, I feel that they should have access to any and all technology that supports their highest level of quality of life. During the pandemic, we were able to see many ways that technology helped accommodate and support residents' quality of life. There have been so many developments in technology over the past 10 to 15 years that can offer individuals a level of independence. They can play games together, but virtually. They can also ask questions to the box on the nightstand or even ask it to play their favorite song. And they can do this with a level of independence. They have the ability to be afforded the security that many of us choose to use in our own homes, including devices that monitor the area and can tell us or loved ones when something out of the ordinary is happening. This added security and connection would have been invaluable during the pandemic. I appreciate the language related to residents' rights, as this is a priority for our program. We want to know that individuals have the ability to know when there's a device on and have choice in that. For roommates or concerns related to roommates, I believe there's ways to provide protection and choice if those issues do arise. Over the last year, through the Mathematica report, Nallog, and personal stories, we've learned that access to the Internet and connecting individuals to the community at large is essential. The next bill I'd like to present on is SB 973, An Act Strengthening the Voice of Residents and Family Councils. I support this bill as it allows for residents and family members to be involved in changes that would directly impact the care and services that provide for their lives. "To do with and not for" is a phrase that our program prides itself on. Allowing residents and family councils to provide input and be active members on committees and stakeholder groups that influence nursing home laws, policies, practices, all of this will honor the importance of their voice. We recognize that there may be times where urgent decisions must be made, but we appreciate the opportunity to be heard as soon as possible for those decisions. As an example of how this will change the landscape for these residents, our Presidents of Resident Council Executive Board have submitted virtual testimony that they recorded for you today, and so you should all receive a copy of that. They have challenges when it comes to being able to write things sometimes or to put their thoughts together. So they recorded messages on what this bill and what you put forward meant to them. The next bill, SB 975, An Act Establishing a Bill of Rights, strengthening the Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care Residents. For years, we've been embracing long-term care culture change, promoting person-centered care and a home-like environment for long-term care residents. This language acknowledges the rights for individuals to treat their home, their room, as their own, with no fewer rights than any other person in the state. This is incredibly powerful and will have a positive impact on residents across our state. Residents deserve the same rights and privileges that many of us take for granted in our own homes, the option to use smartphones, tablets, remote monitoring, even to be excited and ready to embrace new technology. The bill addresses the individual right to privacy under state and federal law. And again, this is something that our program takes incredibly seriously. In my written testimony, I've included links to articles and reports about social isolation of older adults and residents in long-term care settings. Technology can have many benefits, including the reduction of social isolation, providing connectedness, and improving the quality of life, helping to ensure good quality of care. The federal long-term care facility resident rights requirements support the goal of this bill, including reasonable accommodation for self-determination, choice, and the right to interact with members of the community and participate in community activities both inside and outside of the facility. We truly appreciate the committee's commitment to the state's long-term care residents, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Senator. Are there questions from the committee?
Representative Phillips, Representative Hughes has a hand up.
Representative Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Mairead. And also, I want to thank Senator Formica for your really tireless work on these, the Governor's Task Force in Long-Term Care in the wake of the COVID catastrophe. My question is, do you feel like these two, well, you testified on three bills. Do you think that they adequately represent the recommendations of the work of those oversight committees?
Yes, I think they absolutely embrace the spirit of the committee's mission and what came out, as well as honoring the fact that the committee had residents and family members participate and give their opinion in how they felt things should move forward.
Great. Is there anything you would add to it?
Not off the top of my head. I was, I was very happy at the extent to which the bills went.
Great. Thanks. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Clerk, is there someone else?
No other hands raised that I can see.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. Let's look at 973 first. Regarding the council, it states basically that if there are any changes that the proposals or regulations shall seek written input or testimony from resident councils and family councils concerning such policy. So how would that happen? Logistically, how would that work?
So we are actively working with resident councils currently, and we post on our website, and then we push information out to the nursing homes when there's a significant change for the recreation directors to be able to let the resident councils know. And we would ask if they wanted to have an opportunity to send something in.
Okay, so that the responsibility to give information to the resident, the nursing homes, the facilities, would come from you?
I think it's a joint effort. It's something that we have been doing since the pandemic began. I do a weekly Facebook Live on Wednesdays that we will continue to be doing after the pandemic to connect people to information. That's one way we will do this. But yes, we will also be sending out information directly to the nursing homes. We would ask that they would forward that to the resident council and make sure that they had the opportunity to respond. We do have regular meetings and interact with the executive board of Presidents of Resident Council and meet with them several times a month. And they can also speak on behalf of all of the Presidents of Resident Council.
Okay, so I guess my concern is it doesn't really specify who shall make sure that this is done, to make sure that the councils are informed. And the word "shall," as you know, is a very strong word. And so then what are the consequences if they don't? I don't see that in the bill as well. So that's something that you would, you know, if they want to consider. Just to clarify that a little bit. And so then, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, thank you, yes. We can talk about that in the spirit of the bill with the developers and see how we can maybe tighten that up and put some other layers in there.
Thank you. And then 6552, when we talked about the roommate who wouldn't agree, and you said that there are ways that you can, that you may be able to work that out. Can you give us an example? Because it says that the facility has, there has to be an agreement. So you can ask the family people, but the facility, excuse me, the facility first has to intervene and try to convince the unwilling roommate to give their consent. And then you said there are ways that, that they could get consent. So can you give us an example?
Sure. So I reached out to some other states where they have had this level of approval, and they do use different types of devices. And sometimes they talk about, maybe if someone's worried about conversations being recorded, maybe it's just a camera. Maybe at certain times a day around putting parameters in place. And so we really believe that through conversation and mediation, you can also get to an agreement to things when there's a challenge.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So since there are no more questions, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you being here today.
Thank you very much. Welcome as well.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Diane Stone.
Good afternoon, Senator Miller. Senator Miller, Representative Phillips, Senator Kelly, Representative Wilson, and esteemed members of the Aging Committee. My name is Diane Stone. I chair the Aging Subcommittee of the Commission on Women, Children, Seniors Equity and Opportunity, and I'm representing them here today. We've submitted written testimony in support of several bills before you today, all of which are directly related to our residents in long-term care. The past year has simply been devastating. The people that live in long-term care have been hit the hardest by COVID. They have the highest percentage of fatalities. They have the most severe illness. And they had the greatest impact of all of the mitigation strategies. We've heard the stories about isolation, and it's heartbreaking. We can't change what's happened, but we do owe it to older adults and people with disabilities to learn from this and to do better. And several of the bills before you are efforts to do just that. The Commission does support HB 6552, which is the Act Concerning the Rights of Residents in Long-Term Care Facilities to Use Technology of Their Choice. This is not a new issue for this committee, but as we all know, the pandemic has now made it an urgent one. You're going to hear and read testimony from advocates, from agencies, and from individuals today that will make this clear much better than I can. You'll also hear from advocates and agencies that are going to help shape how this can be implemented. But there is no doubt, it must move forward. Similarly, the Commission supports Race Bill 973, An Act Strengthening the Voice of Residents and Family Councils, and Race Bill 975, An Act Strengthening the Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care Residents. I wanted to take a moment to talk about House Bill 6554, An Act Concerning Aging and COVID-19. This bill calls for three executive branch departments to study the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on senior citizens with an emphasis on residents of nursing home facilities and managed residential communities. Although the pandemic, it's not over yet. The state has already started studying the impact on residents of long-term and managed care through the Mathematica report and through the Nursing Home and Assisted Living Oversight Working Group. So speaking for a minute, as the President of the Connecticut Association of Senior Centers, we've been telling all older adults and people with disabilities who live in our communities to stay home and stay safe for a year now. We've seen the impact of social isolation and decreased activity on people living in the community. And we've seen the challenges that they've had in accessing services. I heard an expression the other day, "the tarnished silver lining." And we have found that as well. We've learned a lot about how we can reach people who are isolated, and we have always had people who are isolated in our communities. We need to carry those lessons forward. We can do better. So we do support a study that involves more stakeholders that has a scope that includes all older adults and people with disabilities, and that will lead to the identification of best practices and recommendations for how we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, are there any members that would like to speak?
Yes, Representative Hughes has her hand up.
Representative Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Diane, for your tireless advocacy, not just for senior centers, but for all community members and for especially lifting up those with disabilities also, that we don't have a committee that specifically is the Committee of Cognizance of Them. So I really want to make sure that we include, you know, those folks in our best policies going forward. So did I hear you say about the study that you would like to include more stakeholders or you have specific recommendations for HB 6554?
Yeah, so I think right now it's just looking at three executive branch departments. So it would be more of an administrative review. I think that we can do a lot better by including a lot of stakeholders, including older adults and people with disabilities in the community, including our community service providers, people that are providing home care services as well. But, you know, I think the broader the tent, the bigger the tent, the more information you can get, and the better recommendations we can get. We'd also include public health, who've played a significant role in what we're doing in the community.
Great. And three, Madam Chair, is there anything else that you would add to that, you know, to that concept, I suppose, of HB 6554?
I think that it's fairly broad right now. So, and I don't have direct recommendations, whether there's some specific areas that would want to be looked at. But I think technology and access to technology has been a huge one in the community. So we learned that with education, where every kid got, you know, some kind of an internet-connected device. And every older adult needs one too. So we have to figure out how to do that. There's kind of this mythology that older adults don't use the Internet, and nothing could be further from the truth. Some of them didn't, weren't interested in doing it. Some people still are not interested in socializing with the computer. But, you know, my 83-year-old dad, he's a Zoomer now. He can do it. I think we'll find more people, our computer classes at senior centers were kind of getting a little thin. I think people are going to be signing up now. But we have to make sure that people have appropriate internet-connected devices, and it's not a luxury anymore for anybody.
It's an essential. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Diane, and your task force work that we've, we've made recommendations together and championed them, the stakeholders. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone else?
There are no other hands raised currently.
Thank you. Now, I want to personally thank you for the work that you've done as well on behalf of our seniors and the advocacy. And I would appreciate if you would send a list to the members who you think should be a part of this work group, because it's true. And how can we have a study group or a work group and not have the people that it impacts as a part of that? So again, thank you, and I would appreciate any other recommendations, because you're closer to the ground than we are. And so if you could, we welcome any other recommendations that you have on any of these bills. So again, thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Senator.
Thank you. So next, we have Sarah Polo, and after her will be Susan Lass.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, the, Sarah has not showed up yet. So the next person in line will actually be number seven. We'll see if Sarah, Susan, or Olivia show up later, but number seven is John Shalinski.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shalinski, are you online? And after Mr. Shalinski, we have Mr. Cantor.
Oh, you do? Okay, I have, I just was able to unmute. Thank you very much, Senator. Senator, thank you very much, welcome to the committee. I really appreciate your presence here. Members of the committee, my name is John Shalinski. I'm Managing Director of Elder's Choice of Connecticut, which is a registered homemaker companion agency that's classified as a registry and also an employer-paid, fee-paid employment agency registered with the Department of Labor. I am the former president of the Connecticut Association of Home Care Registries. I'm here to speak about Bill nine seventy-four, which makes some changes regarding registries that are homemaker companion agencies. registries place care providers as private duty aides for non-medical services. Much of the language in this bill arises from House Bill fifty-three twenty-two in the 2017 session, for which I submitted testimony to this committee almost three years ago to the day. Representative Bolinski will remember that reasonably well. I have said then, and I'm going to say now, and I've said for seven years to the committee, what we call Chapter four hundred O, the Homemaker Companion Services section of our statute, needs comprehensive review to meet the realities of healthcare. It's just not the right where it needs to be. Home care is an extension of healthcare, and consumers, and consumers and care providers are at risk in our state every day. As a state, we're doing a disservice to our citizens who need this kind of care and individuals who provide the care. This bill really does nothing of substance to address the real issues of home care. I've provided some written testimony, which is much longer than three minutes. I would really ask the committee to read them carefully. I will make a few comments about the bill. Some of the changes are unnecessary, particularly Section one five, which adds the word registry after homemaker companion agency. That language is redundant. A registry is defined in the statutes as a homemaker companion agency. The use of the word employee when referring to a registry is very misleading. Federal wage and hour regulations prohibit a registry to be the employer of a care provider. The registry cannot set the pay, terms of services, or control the provider. A registry is an employment agency and refers an individual acting as an independent contractor to be placed in a consumer's residence. The changes proposed in Section two, lines sixty-one through ninety-four, arise specifically from an absolute need to inform consumers of the benefits and risks of using a registry. I support most of these comments. The committee should be aware that the requirement to report care provider earnings tends to address a problem in reporting and collecting employment taxes due. A consequence of Section two B three is to recognize, quote, "other forms of insurance," end quote, in the absence of an affordable workers' compensation product for consumers in Connecticut and their direct care workers, such as home care providers, cooks, and housekeepers. And finally, regarding Section three, non-compete clauses are simply not legal for a registry. We have no position on that. Under federal wage and hour regulations, a registry is not allowed to control a care provider, so we can't restrict their actions. I have a number of cases that have gone private because the care, the family wanted them to. I really implore the committee to take the lead, where no other committee or elected official has yet to lead. I've been at this now for seven years before the General Assembly. I have forty years of experience in geriatrics and gerontology. I have been involved in hands-on direct care of frail elderly for well over fifteen years now. Homemaker companion agency is the long term for this business. We're talking about home care, and we need to distinguish home care from home healthcare. Lots of people use the terms interchangeably. But those are the two, those are the two terms in the industry.
Reaching the end of your three minutes, please.
Thank you, I'll wrap it up. We need to rewrite the entire regulations. We need to require caregivers to have training. We need to protect the caregivers who are providing for the frail elderly. We do not have adequate protections for them on our public policy. We do not have any training for caregivers. It is not a requirement. It's a shame what we do in our state to the frail elderly. I've worked with Commissioner Hernandez before, and I'm standing ready to work with this committee now. Do something, please. This bill is not enough. We really need to rewrite the statutes and make it clear for consumers and protect caregivers. We're not doing the best job we could. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Shalinski. Before I go to the members of the committee, is there another state? Do you know if there's another state that trains their caregiver?
There are many states that require training of caregivers, and that, and many, many, many states. And Pennsylvania is a good example. I have a partner in Pennsylvania. The Department of Aging takes the lead in Pennsylvania on all home, all non-medical home care. They have registration for home care registries and home care agencies. Every agency or registry is required to have a training manual that is approved by the Department of Aging, and every care provider is required to take an annual test to affirm their knowledge of the basics. The Department of Aging also conducts biannual, biannual inspections of home care agencies to assure compliance. There are lots of things that we could do here. We could, we could empower home care agencies to follow a particular curriculum that's approved by the state, and we could start training people better. I mean, this is an entry-level position. A lot of people who, who, we need people to provide home care, they need to be trained. We could do a wonderful job in building, building a job pool. And this is an entry-level job that, in healthcare, that can move to other positions, from licensed practical nurses to nurses to physical therapists. This is, this is a stepping stone into a career of professional healthcare. And we're, we don't have enough people, we're not training them. And we are, don't, we have too many people who are at risk because caregivers are untrained. I will add, Senator, to your question, that there's a difference between personal care and basic companionship. And this is going to take some study. But the reality is that, and the elephant in the room, and I've said this in my written testimony, is this is really, this is really an issue between the Department of Public Health and the Department of Consumer Protection. Some of the work that is done by home caregivers today requires training to transfer someone from, let's say, a chair to, a wheelchair to a chair, or on a commode to be, to be personal care. And that requires training. And the training is not consistent for care providers. There are well over six hundred home care agencies in the state, and the number of thirty thousand daily care providers that service in Connecticut has been used in public testimony more than once. So I'll, I'll stick with that number. We're not training people, nor are we requiring health exams. I mean, we all know from the pandemic that, that care providers are going into facilities as well and into private residences, and they have for, for lack of, you know, not, for lack of their own care, but they have also helped to spread COVID. And not, not on purpose, but it's just a natural consequence of the disease and the work that care providers do. We need to be sure that people are trained. We need to be sure that someone doesn't have, say, brittle diabetes or a serious heart condition or seizures that would find them alone in a residence with someone and then unable to provide care. There has to be some general modicum of health for a provider to be able to go in and out of a house. And again, that needs research and study.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Clark, do we have members in the queue to speak?
Yes, we have Representative Bolinski, followed by Representative Wilson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Shalinski, about shining a little bit of light, because clarity in defining what home care actually is is, is something that we institutionally do not understand from a government perspective. It's more than regulation, it's more than a owner's manual, it's more than instructions. In my experience, home care was the most effective aging-in-place mechanism that, that, that I employed with, you know, particularly with my mother. But you have to be lucky enough to find the right person, somebody who doesn't just understand the best practices, but somebody like you, sir, that is able to play the matchmaker role. Because so much of the, you know, home care and companion, and then later in, in, in life, higher levels of, of aging in place can't succeed without, you know, having the right person with the right personality and the right orientation, which is also challenged by the fact that these individuals, even those amongst them that are angels, are terribly underpaid. As a state, we need to actually get serious about the concept of aging in place, because we spend a, just a ton of time talking about it. But, you know, it seems like governmentally and from an agency perspective, particularly with DPH, there's a reluctance to actually get out there and, and allow these choices, which for many people are far superior choices. It's almost as if we don't want to mess with the, the way we've done things in the past. You know, the institutional care that, you know, happens, which is the most expensive and least caring way to deal with, you know, a relative that needs the extra level of care or is in cognitive decline. You know, they hold all the power in the state when it comes to aging in place. It's an existential threat to them. And as a government, we need to pull on our big-boy pants and understand what's really important for constituents. And the well-being, not just of the aging members of our community, but the well-being of their families and their caregivers in being able to augment the times when they can't be there to provide the care themselves. So there was no question in there. It was just a recognition of the fact that we're just not taking this very seriously. Right? And, you know, for gosh sake, you know, I'm not sure if it's a task force, I'm not sure if it's something that gets done at the executive level, which I actually would question, because the governor and his staff have pretty much got their hands more full than they need to be. But somebody who understands this dynamic, that doesn't have attachments to the establishment, needs, needs to be in there planning this. Because right now, the best way to care for many people is to keep them the hell out of these institutions.
Yes.
But that's where we wind up going when there isn't an infrastructure built around being able to age in place. So God love you for your advocacy. I'm, I'm there with you. I really, really wish, you know, we could find a committed bunch of people with the courage to actually do something to make this available more widely and have it be covered by insurance. And, you know, do all kinds of really revolutionary things so that people that have lived their lives raising us and doing community service can have dignity as they come in towards, you know, the runway at the end of the life. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. I respect your work, and thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me.
Thank you, Representative. I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, was it Representative Wilson you said was next?
That is correct.
Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, John, for being here. I'm going to sound a little bit like Representative Bolinski. I'll give you my background so that you understand where I'm coming from. I was forty-plus years in, in the insurance and financial service industry. I was certified by the State of Connecticut in the Partnership for Long-Term Care back in nineteen eighty-nine. That'll give you a little picture of the background. And when I hear you talk about education, and I think I heard you use the word certified or certification, I'll, I'll go to both my experience as a, as an advisor with many clients who, who ended up on claim for long-term care, but also go to my own dad, who at, at the twilight of his years, was seven times in and out of Rose Haven here in Litchfield, Connecticut. And all seven times he then, we were fortunate enough to have long-term care insurance, and we were fortunate enough to use a great agency here, Northwest VNA. And in full disclosure, I was a board member there. But after he passed, because my, 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 my journey with them made me realize how important they are. And I kind of stepped forward and said, look, if you're ever looking for somebody to be on your board, I'd be happy. And, and I was blessed to, to spend many years on that board. So from, I'll just use this as, as, as a way of describing where I'm going. There's registries, and then there's registries. And I see you nod your head, so I know you know what I mean. I have a former client right now who takes care of an elderly woman in her nineties in Avon. No, no relation, just longtime good friend. And one of the sad parts of all of this is that you may go to a registry and you may get this caregiver to come in, and then form a relationship, the, the, the client or the patient forms a relationship with that individual and would hate to part from that individual. But then when their conservator or healthcare power person realizes that they have long-term care insurance, but because that caregiver is not educated and certified, the insurance company will not reimburse. And they now have to deal with an emotional situation, trying to have that person switch to a new caregiver going through an agency that does have certified people. So what you're, what you've spoken of here today, you know, really rang very true with me. And, and so my question is, and my concern is, of course, we've talked about this in past years, and nothing's happened, and here we are again. And now we get someone with your background testifying again. And we haven't written the legislation in such a way that it really gives us what we think we need. And so my question is, do we have enough time right now to rewrite this so that we can actually accomplish something this year? In other words, if you helped us and rolled up your sleeves and came in and said, okay, don't do this, but do this, and so forth, would you be able to contribute to that?
Thank you, Representative Wilson. The short answer is, yes, I could contribute to that. But I don't hold any special, any special common sense here other than the fact that I've, I've got a lot of experience in a variety of different settings. And the fact is that it's not that simple, in my opinion, to promulgate effective education or core, core criteria right now. We really need to sit down between agencies and registries combined. I mean, registries, I mean, I've said it in my written testimony, registries have a much higher standard. And in my opinion, a registry absolutely must refer someone who has been trained as a CNA, HJA, LPN at a, at a minimum, because they're placing someone private duty into a home. Agencies, I mean, and there are all kinds of home care, whether it's full-time live into an hour here or there. So every business model is different, over, over six hundred-plus HCAs. And what's good for, you know, the largest provider in the state, companions and homemakers, and they have a lot of really fine caregivers and, and franchisees. But like everybody else, I mean, some friends, some, some caregivers are not always as good as others. But there's no, and it's not just one agency, there are six hundred of them. And there's no consistency. There's no guarantee that the consumer gets the person walking in the door knows what to do. I mean, that's what we need, is some basic common. I mean, that's what we need is some basic, common understanding. It's gonna take a little time, because as I said earlier, companion care is very different from personal care. And the, the services described in, in Section 400O, the statutes, simply incorporates all of that. And we have to find a way to do it fairly, correctly, safely, in a person-centered manner. But I don't want to lose sight in the fact that we also need to do a better job with our care providers and protecting them. When they go into, they, before they start a case, they need to know how much they're getting paid, what their, what the compensation is, what their benefits and, and holidays and vacation are. They need to know that they have some privacy in the house and their belongings are secure. They need to know the chemicals, they need to know that chemicals are, they need to know that chemicals are, are appropriately labeled and are secure. They have lots of protections that need to be provided to caregivers in the home. So we have a lot of work to do. And I really believe that the, that the state Commissioner Hernandez is available. I spoke with Kathy Abercrombie probably three years ago. She was going to call a, a working committee group. I don't think this is a political issue. This is a, needs a working committee, not a task force. So it's time for us to really get serious. Maybe during the recess, we can start working on this and have something so next year we can really do it right. And have a, have a section on home care that incorporates everything we really need to do. And also start training people who want to be trained and provide and have a job. We can get people trained. I can't tell you how many agencies I know call me looking for caregivers, which I don't have, or, or want to know if I can help them, because they can't find a caregiver to, to support a client that's called them.
Well, I, I really appreciate your, your comments and your knowledge, sir. I guess my, my sadness is that, that it sounds like we're still on the drawing board. And even when we got to implementing new legislation on this, there's gonna have to be a timeline to get the agencies up and compliant and their employees up and compliant. And in the meantime, you know, it's, it's, it's just gonna take a while for, for people to really be assured that they're gonna get the care and the value for the dollars that they're putting out to take care of their loved ones and themselves. So thank you very much for being here today. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Clark? Is there anyone else in the queue?
Yeah, Representative Bolinsky has his hand up again.
Representative Bolinsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll address these comments through you to both of the prior speakers. You know, if, if what we have is demonstrably not what we need, rather than failing to take action again this year for lack of having a, a, a bill that has some efficacy, the words "task force" usually strike fear in the hearts of every legislator and every
Retired legislator.
Yeah. It, it's, but you know what? I, I, you know, with the help of, of a lot of very concerned people, a couple of years ago, we turned a bill for dyslexia in education into a task force. And we had appointees by the governor, appointees by the legislative, legislative leadership, appointees from industry, and, you know, we had them operate and they operated for about a year. And they came back with recommendations that were concrete. I mean, they just, they just took that thing and they cared about it and they carried it. And this year, we have a couple pieces of, of, of legislation on edu, the education component of the requirements for dyslexic education, working their way through higher education. Because the education doesn't start unless you place it someplace with people that are about to become certified or licensed in something. Considering how many task forces we, we conduct that don't do anything or don't come to conclusions, that dyslexia task force was awesome. And maybe we turn this bill into a task force, rather than failing at it and then coming back again next year to fail at it again, let's come back next year with, with a plan. So, and that, you know, again, no questions in there, but, you know, for my ranking members, for the chairman, co-chairs, we should probably talk about that in our committee meeting coming up. Or offline in a caucus of some sort. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to comment a second time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
No other hands raised.
I have a question, and you may have addressed this, Mr. Shalansky, in your testimony. Do you have any comments on the language change from individual to employee?
Yes, I did. And let me add again, we already have in the definition section, the word employee includes an individual who's providing services to a homemaker companion agency, but is classified by, as an independent contractor. So the word employee is a misnomer for registry under federal wage and hour laws. I don't have, I can't have these individuals as employees. I can't refer, I don't refer them to as my employees. And I have agreements with them that stipulate that they are independent contractors to me. I cannot manage them. I can't direct them. I can't set their pay. And that's explicit in my agreement with the caregiver and explicit in my agreement with the consumer. So the word employee is really a misnomer. On the other hand, the definition includes an independent contractor. I guess I'm okay with it. It, it really is confusing to the consumer, in my opinion. But we can live with it because of the way the definitions are written on the statute.
Okay, thank you very much. So if there aren't any more questions, Mrs. Shalansky, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, and I stand ready to support the committee and the state in any way possible.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brian Cantor, followed by Joseph Markley. Is Mr. Cantor on the, on the line?
He should be. See him on here. Mr. Cantor, you just have to take yourself off mute. There we go. Looks like he's just connecting. Just give him a minute to connect to the audio.
Modern technology.
Mr. Cantor, it says you're on mute again. I gave you a prompt to unmute.
There are three dots on the upper right-hand side, three dots. If you hit on those three dots, you'll see unmute.
So why don't we go to Mr. Markley? Until Mr. Cantor can
He just unmuted for a second.
Did he?
You were muted for a second and then you re-muted.
Unmute, unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. I apologize for that, the, the way. Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Brian Cantor and I'm an attorney with an office in residence in Fairfield, Connecticut, and I've been practicing law since 1987. I have the honor of appearing before you today to submit testimony in support of HB 6552 on behalf of the Elder Law Section of the Connecticut Bar Association, which I am a member. The people have spoken before me, have spoken very eloquent, eloquently, and I'm gonna refer to my written testimony, which repeats a lot of what's been said before. So I'm gonna try and, instead of making another speech, I'm gonna try and basically highlight some of the questions and comments that have been made by some of the senators and the representatives and, and others, speakers. My grandfather used to say, out of something bad, make something good. Make something good out of something bad. And out of this pandemic, there is one thing that you can do to make, improve the lives of these residents in these long-term care facilities, and that is by approving this bill. The isolation that these members, these people who live in these long-term care facilities have experienced, you understand that. The technology that is out there would be used by these people living in these long-term care facilities in their homes. And you have to remember that these residences are their homes, these long-term care facilities. They should have the right to have the same modalities and same technology that they would have in their homes. We've all visited somebody who's sick or in one of these long-term care facilities and you can see the smiles that you bring to their faces, the difference you make by visiting with them. Many of our residents of these long-term care facilities, they, their family members and loved ones do not have the ability to visit with them because of distance, pandemics, flu epidemics, as well as work schedules. This technology will allow them to connect with their loved ones. But more importantly, a couple of things have been addressed and some things that haven't been thought about. And that, one thing is that if you allow for the technology in these long-term care facilities, the technology companies will develop technology that will improve the lives of the residents and improve their care by virtue of there being a market for it. The cost to the facilities is minimal because it's being born right now and it's built by the residents themselves. However, as they vie for private patients, okay, private dollars, I believe that they will want to improve their technology and the use of the technology as a sales feature for the facility.
Sorry to interrupt, we're reaching the end of your three minutes. If you please just wrap up your last
The other item is on privacy issues. I, with, with a roommate, the social workers and staff at these facilities are extremely talented. And I've seen them work wonders dealing with the residents. And I have faith that they will be able to work with the residents and work through any concerns that a roommate may have. There's also privacy protections built in with signs being on the door of the resident's room. And and there's also something called the curtain too, where they can, you know, have some privacy for the roommate. So I think it's a wonderful bill and I would ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Are there any questions from the members?
Yes, Representative Leeper has her hand up.
Representative Leeper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Brian. I just wanted to say thank you and I'm so glad to have you participating in this committee from Fairfield and on behalf of our most venerable seniors. So thank you very much for weighing in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the indulgence, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam. Is there anyone else? Mr. Clark?
There are no, their hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor, thank you for joining us today and giving us your testimony. It's always good to hear from the public. But I do have a question on the roommate, and I guess I'll be, that'll be a question for everyone who's in support of this bill. The roommate who refuses to participate, and you said something that was interesting. You said that there are usually so, social workers in these facilities that know how to work with the patients. So, but what if we have a facility where they're pushing back against this particular law? So how do you handle it then, where they're not really encouraging the social worker to encourage the work with the resident that's refusing? Do you have any comments on that?
Well, you know, if this bill is passed, it, it is a statute, it's a law. If they're impeding the resident's ability to utilize the, the technology, while I don't see a private right of action in this bill right now, there may be, there might be some cause of action out there. So the, you know, by bringing in advocates for the patient, they could encourage the facility to to encourage, well, actually, I dropped back on that. I had said earlier that technology and the use of this, of this technology is going to be a sales point for these facilities, for the private pay patients, which, you know, are very important to these facilities. So I really don't think you're gonna get facilities in the near future, if this bill is passed, who are going to continue to object to this. But I think it's gonna be a sales point for them. But if, if they push back, that might be a problem. We may have to come back later on to, you know, amend this bill to put some teeth in it if the courts aren't enforcing it. But I, I think that the marketplace will take care of it, because if facility A is encouraging and using this technology, and by the way, they've paid for, you know, a nanny camera, whatever the device is for the residents, it's already been pre-installed, it's gonna make that location more attractive to families, because they can keep in touch with that loved one much better. If you are a loved one, why would you want to go to a facility where they're not encouraging this technology? So I think the marketplace will probably take care of those that don't want to use the technology. I think that's probably the, the best answer to your question, Senator.
Thank you very much, and that's a very good point. Okay, since there are no more questions from
Actually, we, we have two more that just came up. We have Representative Hughes and then Representative Vargas.
Representative Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address that point that currently, and I believe, is Marie or whoever LCO is on this, that grievances or concerns would go through the ombudsman's office if a facility wasn't implementing properly. Again, it's not civil, but it is, it is a grievance avenue, I believe. And some facilities will have difficulty, we talked about this a lot in our, in our committee meetings, will have difficulty implementing it, but, but there can be some guidelines issued afterwards to support facilities in implementing this.
All right.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Representative Vargas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney Cantor, in your experience, has there been an issue with some of these facilities entering into private agreements with a provider and excluding other providers in exchange for some benefit to the facility?
I haven't experienced that at all. It may be that that could be an issue in the future, but without this bill, I don't see that being the case. I don't, I, I'm just not certain that they, without this bill that's enabling the legislation that the technology's really being used out there. That, that is a very good question. That could be a problem in the future.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Clark, are there any other members who would like to speak?
There are no other hands up.
Okay, great. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Cantor, for joining us today.
Thank you.
We appreciate your insight. Our next speaker is Joseph Markley, followed by Tina Yetz.
Thank you, Senator Miller, and congratulations. And thank you, Representative Phipps and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. I'm Joe Markley, the Communications Liaison for Companions and Homemakers. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in your consideration of SB 974, an act concerning homemaker and companion services. The home care program for elders in Connecticut, which permits the use of federal funds for medical and non-medical home care services, is one of the great successes of state government. In the thirty-six years this program has been in place, it's enabled tens of thousands of our seniors to remain safely in their homes, where they prefer to be. And by helping seniors avoid long-term care facilities, it saves taxpayers about $450 million each year. Most of the service essential to that program is provided through agencies like Companions and Homemakers. The value our agency brings to this system is the match we create, what Representative Bolinsky referred to, the matchmaker. The value our agency brings to this system is the match we create, what Representative Bolinsky referred to, the matchmaking, between people in need and caregivers who can help them, and the training, oversight, and support that we provide to that relationship. Our care managers understand the talents of our caregivers, and they have experience assessing the needs of our clients. Their expertise enables them to make the right match of caregiver to client, then to monitor that relationship and to make sure backup is available when needed. Creating and nurturing this relationship is at the heart of what we do. Two years ago, a law went into effect banning non-compete agreements in the home care industry. The fact is, non-compete agreements weren't a problem in home care. Caregivers have long been able to work for other agencies simultaneously and to have their own private clients if they wish. Our concern is that the law went much further than non-compete agreements, banning non-solicitation agreements as well. Non-solicitation agreements prevent employees from taking existing clients to another agency or converting them into private clients. It's a protection that's available to virtually every business in every state. Non-solicitation agreements stabilize the provision of home care. Without this protection, the match we make between the caregiver and the client, the value we bring to home care, can be taken from us. We run the risk of becoming a mere referral service, introducing a caregiver to a client only to lose them both. That destroys the continuity of care that agencies offer. Our managers closely monitor the work of our caregivers, make changes as needed, find substitutes and replacements to provide critical service when a caregiver is unavailable. The agency model is by far the most popular for home care because people see the benefits we provide. Section 3 of this bill, which is the part that deals with non-solicitation, would allow us to ask caregivers to respect our existing relationship with our clients by continuing to serve the people we match them with through our agency during their employment with us and for six months thereafter. It is a reasonable and customary arrangement, and restoring it is critical to protecting the agency model for care in Connecticut. I ask you to consider supporting SB 879, and I would be very happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Senator. It's great seeing you again.
Thank you. It's good to see you, and I hope you enjoy yourself in that lovely chamber.
Well, thank you. I haven't, I haven't had the opportunity to go in there yet, but I'm excited. Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have members that would like to make comments?
Yes, we have Representative Case followed by Representative Wilson.
Representative Case.
Representative Case, you on mute?
No, I'm unmuted now. Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's good to see you there. And Joe, it's, it's always good to see you testifying. A question for you, so the solicitation, because we've been working on this for years. In your business model, where, where else do you see this in other types of business? I think the six month is pretty generous. Or not very generous, for most businesses, it's a year before you can solicit and go out to another company. But your model, as far as taking care of a client and having the caregiver stay with the client, is a great model, and that's the way you grow your business on, and it also makes a stable relationship with the person that's getting the care. So where do we see this in other industries?
I think in, 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 in most industries, there's, I would say virtually all industries, there's a prohibition against the solicitation of an existing client. And I'll give you an example from my own life, Representative. I've, for years, on and off, taught college board courses, preparation courses for high school students and for people taking graduate record exams. And I did it for Stanley Kaplan. So Kaplan says, you can't set up your own business on the side. You can't go to work for another college board prep course. We don't have that prohibition. If, if, if companions and homemakers would say, if you want to work for another home care agency at the same time, please do. All we're asking is that you not take our existing clients. And the example would be if I had a class full of, of high school students that I was preparing. If the day I met them, I said, listen, instead of, instead of doing this through Stanley Kaplan, why don't me, next Wednesday, meet me down at the McDonald's and you can pay me directly? And obviously, I, I think, I would make more that way, and they would pay less. The trouble is that the business model of Stanley Kaplan would disappear because every time they matched a teacher up with the students, they'd leave. Very hard for a business to exist if the very people you introduce them to can then be taken away from the business. And all we ask is not that the people don't go to work for another agency or even have private clients, but just to say, if we introduced you to this person, because we had a relationship with them, with the client going in, please respect that relationship and continue to do your work for that person through us. That's what we mean by solicitation.
And I think that's fair and through you, Madam Chair. In our discussions in the previous years, we have talked about that of not using an agency like this as a referral agency to come in and go with a client and, and like the client, stay with the client, and pull them out of the agency that hired. But you have no problem with the worker going and working for another agency because most of these, the CNA works or the caregivers, they go out and they have to go work with multiple clients. So you might not have clients available for that PCA or that CNA or somebody. So they have no choice. But you do everything, do you do everything you can through companions and homemakers to make sure, especially during COVID time, that your workers stay within your client base, so you have control over that and they can make a living.
You make an excellent point. We're, we're happy when caregivers work for other agencies at the same time they're working for us because we want them to stay in the field, if they're good caregivers. And if, if we can't give them as much work as they need, if they can find it somewhere else, that's great. We just want to make sure that the, that the work, that the, the clients that we have solicited and the caregivers we've solicited, this is the heart of the business, is finding the clients, finding the caregivers, and then putting them together. That having done that work, that the whole thing just doesn't disappear on us because somebody says, well, now that, now that you've introduced us, we're going to go off on our own.
But it's not only the caregiving, Joe, and I'll, I'll end with this, Madam Chair. It's not only caregiving, it's your back office stuff that works with the client as far as DSS and other benefits in order to make sure. And the, the thing that I sort of learned about this was, if you go to private or you go to some other agencies, unlike yours, somebody calls out sick, you have somebody to fill in that spot.
Right.
And I think that's very big for the industry, and it doesn't happen all over the place that way. Is that fair to say? So there, there's, there's a lot of benefits to that being with an agency.
Yeah, well, and that's why the agencies have succeeded. You know, another thing, you're absolutely right. If somebody calls in sick or their car won't start or whatever, we will make quite an effort, and even if it involves paying a substantial bonus to make sure that somebody gets out there immediately to take care of it. I'd also say, you're dealing with vulnerable people in some cases. And the oversight of the relationship between the caregiver and the client is important too because we want to make sure that it remains a healthy relationship, that nobody, that, that the attachment doesn't turn into dependency or a situation where somebody takes advantage of somebody. So it's, it's good to have an agency as kind of a, a, a third party making, watching over everything that's going on.
Well, I thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank you, Mr. Markley, for coming forward to. Have a good day.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Joe, good to see you in your new role there. Probably feels quite a bit different being on the side of the camera you, you're sitting on there right now. So when John, I just lost his name here, Shalansky, made his presentation. So your agency and his agency are in similar lines of work. I, I presume I'm correct on that.
But different, we're different types of, of businesses.
But you still, and are your folks independent contractors or is the same as his?
No, our, that's the difference. Our people are employees of Companions and Homemakers. So it is, it's, it's a different sort of a service.
Okay, all right. So, so my question should have been, I should have asked him my question instead of you, and it was about that independent contractor status and, and the IRS's view on definition of an independent contractor. So I apologize, but it was nice to understand the difference between the two types of agencies. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any more questions, Representatives, that would like to speak, Mr. Clark?
There are none.
Thank you. Senator, it is great seeing you again, and we appreciate you coming in to testify.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Next, we have Tina Yetz. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
You did just fine.
Great. And so followed by her will be Jeanette Sullivan Martinez. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Tina Yetz. I am the Vice President of the Connecticut Association of Residential Care Homes and the Administrator of Eliza Huntington Home in Norwich. I'm here today to raise concerns with Bill Number 975, an act strengthening the Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care Facility Residents. Residential care homes care for some of the most vulnerable people, people in the state, with the majority of our residents having mental health diagnoses and many other ailments. The pandemic was a particularly challenging time for our residents and staff as our homes are congregate settings with shared living spaces. Our employees worked on the front lines during the pandemic for wages slightly above minimum wage. Our administrators and experienced staff often covered additional shifts, at times working 80-plus hours due to the lack of available staff. And most of our residents spent months in lockdown with limited contact outside the home and some becoming ill with the virus. We appreciate the intent behind the legislation to ensure the residents' autonomy and rights are respected. It's important to remember that residential care homes largely care for residents who are mobile and free to come and go as they please from the home. Most residential care homes have a set of house rules, which have similarities to landlord-tenant agreements, but set additional expectations for living in the community setting. These agreements ensure the resident understands that it's a community setting, and there are certain expectations for all residents. These agreements can involve living quarter dynamics, since most residential care homes' living quarters are shared rooms. For instance, many homes may establish quiet periods so as to avoid loud music or other disruptive behavior late into the night. Our concern with the language centers on the ambiguity with the language and has no fewer rights than any other resident of the state. We agree that the residential care home is their home and should be treated as such. However, the terminology "no fewer rights than other residents" is confusing and vague and fails to fully consider all the other public health laws and regulations that the homes must abide by. Even landlord-tenant relationships impose certain dynamics that may lead to treating a rental differently than a homeowner. Residential care homes may establish customary door-knocking rules to respect the resident's privacy, but also ensure the safety of everyone in the home. A resident may have the right not to respond in their home or even in an apartment to a knock at the door. But in our homes, if that was the case, we would eventually enter the room consistent with our house rules and out of concern for the resident's safety. We welcome the opportunity to discuss this issue with the committee and any other stakeholders further, but believe the current bill language is problematic and vague. Thank you for your time.
Senator Miller, you're on mute still.
I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. Are there questions from members of the committee?
I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have Jeanette Sullivan Martinez, and after her is Stacy Altamore. Mr. Clark, is Jeanette Sullivan?
Jeanette is here. She's. Jeanette, you should have seen a prompt from me to turn on your video and unmute yourself. Let's give her a second. Jeanette, your, yeah, your video's on. You just have to get the, there you go.
Sorry for the delay. I needed some help. Good afternoon, Senator and distinguished committee members. My name is Jeanette Sullivan Martinez, and I am President of the Resident Council at Pendleton Rehabilitation and Health in Mystic, Connecticut. I am also President of the Statewide Coalition for Resident Council Presidents Throughout the State. It was my distinguished honor, I, I'm speaking to you today within regards to Bill 7, 973, sorry. Got a little confused there for a moment. It was my distinguished honor to be asked by the Corporation Mathematicas when they were doing some committee meetings with regards to isolation and visitation, as well as staffing issues throughout the state. I've spoken at several different public hearings with regards to increasing the personal needs allowance, and it is my distinguished honor to talk to you today. What I wanted to bring about today is that it's very important for people like myself living in a nursing facility to be able to have a voice for those issues that concern us. And so I'm in big support of this bill because I think it gives the opportunity for us to be made aware of issues or concerns or difficulties that we may be able to have input to, to give better understanding, better clarity, better reasoning in getting these bills and legislation passed. I believe there would be others in other facilities that would love the opportunity to be able to speak up on behalf of their residents, and this type of bill would offer us that opportunity. I believe it's important that a resident has the right and the ability to either give verbal, written, or even visual consent. This has changed my life in the last year, being able to come to this type of meeting rather than having to get up, say, 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, be on the road, have to pay for the transportation, pay for the staffing, then wait for your turn. As you know, things tend to always go longer than you plan, and that adds, and added anxiety and stress. And this means our mode of being able to speak with you today on behalf of myself and the residents in the state of Connecticut, I give a big amen to because I think it's going to open the doors for the committees and the legislation at large to truly understand what residents go through, what they feel, and what is important to them. Just because we live in a nursing home doesn't mean we're dead above the neck. We have opinions and thoughts and feelings, and a lot of us have done jobs in the community that have added to vast knowledge that we'd be able to share with you on what it's like to actually be in a nursing facility and help those coming behind us that might need help and assistance as well. Thank you for hearing me today. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan Martinez. We appreciate you taking the charge to be the voice of the patients or clients in, in your facility. So thank you very much. I don't see any hands to, from the members to ask questions. So again, thank you for your testimony.
My pleasure, truly. Thank you, Senator.
So next, we have, I don't see Stacy Altamore, I'm told is not here. So next, we have Kathleen Flaherty, followed by Jean Mills Aronha.
Thank you so much, Senator Miller, Representative Phipps, and all the members of the Aging Committee. My name is Kathy Flaherty, and I am the Executive Director of Connecticut Legal Rights Project. We represent people who are eligible for mental health services from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. And just as a resident of this state, I want to thank this committee in particular for the interest and oversight that you've shown in terms of the issues facing our seniors in this state, especially the people living in congregate care facilities. I just want, part of the reason I wanted to testify here today is that you don't forget that there are elderly members of our community in Demus facilities. Demus has two wings at CVH that are geriatric wings. They did not prioritize Demus facilities for access to the vaccine. You may not be aware that COVID ran through one of those geriatric units in late January of this year. And everybody on the unit ended up either in COVID isolation or at Middlesex Hospital. The bills that you've put forward, 6554, 6552, 973, and 975, I support all of them as they examine the issues that face our seniors. But I would encourage you to consider similar changes. But I would encourage you to consider similar changes to the Patients' Bill of Rights for psychiatric facilities. The folks who stay in state-operated facilities, they are not short-term stays the way they are in private psychiatric hospitals. There are people who spend years there, if not decades there. Please don't forget them. They have been isolated from friends and family the same way people in nursing homes have because visits have been restricted since the last St. Patrick's Day. And people deserve to have access to technology, to cell phones, all that kind of stuff. I've included in my written testimony, and I see Joe kind of trying to get my attention, that suggested language change. So I just think if you would consider amendments to your bills and do a JFS language to the floor, our folks would really appreciate it. So thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flaherty. Are there questions from members of the committee? I don't see any hands ready. So I want to thank you, and we will take a look at your testimony. So just, I know you, the three minutes, you didn't get a chance to highlight some of those changes. So just give us the changes that you recommend.
Well, the highlight really is, we have a Patients' Bill of Rights for psychiatric facilities the same way that nursing home residents have a Bill of Rights. And we have communication rights in the Patients' Bill of Rights, but they are pretty much trapped in the twentieth-century way of doing things. People have access to a communal telephone, and they have access to the U.S. mail. And we all know about the problems that we've had, that everybody's had with the postal service, and people have had to use a shared phone that's in the hallway. So there's no sense of privacy. Connecticut does not allow psychiatric patients to keep their own cell phones on them if they have them when they come into hospitals. That does happen in other states. It does happen in other countries. The way people keep in touch nowadays with access to the Internet and email, that's the way people communicate now. I appreciate what the department has done in terms of getting cell phones so that people could do FaceTime or Google Duo or whatever the other apps are with their individual family members, but they're still doing it on a shared phone. So that would really be... My suggestion is that there has to be access and to not take people's property away from them the way... Because these end up being the places where people live.
Well, thank you for those comments, and thank you for your work, your advocacy for this population. And I call it being the voice for the voiceless. So I really appreciate the work that you do on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator Miller. On the only supplement I would say to that is I try to amplify their voices because they're, as you probably know, so often unheard. I like to speak with them rather than for them, but it's a privilege and an honor to be able to do the work, and I'm so glad to see you as part of this committee now. So welcome to the Senate.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Jean Mills Aronha, followed by Matt Barrett.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jean Mills Aronha, and I'm the Managing Attorney of the Stanford Office of Connecticut Legal Services where I practice elder law. Connecticut's legal aid programs provide free legal services to low-income residents, including those living in long-term care facilities. I served on the governor's nursing home and assisted Living Oversight Working Group, which examined solutions to the crises that arose in these facilities during the pandemic. The Oversight Working Group learned that the lived experiences of residents and family members were critical to understanding what went wrong during the pandemic. I'm testifying in support of three bills that enhance the ability of long-term residents and their families to communicate, to make their needs and concerns known. The pandemic has only heightened the longstanding dangers of secluding residents of long-term care facilities and failing to listen to their voices. On HB 6552, residents have suffered disproportionate amounts of illness and death during the pandemic, but even residents who did not get COVID-19 were affected when visitation was halted one year ago. Family members and friends who had long been a constant presence in the facilities and in the lives of their loved ones were shut out. Some facilities tried to make virtual visits possible, often with little success, and visitation is still severely restricted. Residents should be able to use 21st-century technology to connect with their family, friends, and other persons, just as the rest of us do. They deserve to maintain their relationships, their mental health, and to have oversight of conditions within the facilities. A patchwork of rules made by individual facilities is not acceptable. This bill carefully balances the right of a resident to use technology with the privacy rights of staff, roommates, and other individuals. I'm also speaking in support of Senate Bill 973, strengthening the voice of residents and family councils because no one knows the reality of conditions on the ground better than the residents and their family members. This bill would require that policymakers and lawmakers affirmatively seek input of family residents and councils. As the disability community frequently says, "Nothing about us without us." For too long, the voices of residents and family members have not been heard, while others developed policy that directly affected their lives and care conditions. This bill would inquire that their input is incorporated into policy decision-making and new laws affecting them. And finally, Senate Bill 975, strengthening the rights... The Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care Residents, amending the current Bill of Rights and establishing that the resident is entitled to treat his or her living quarters as his or her home with no fewer rights than any other resident of the state, and to voice grievances and recommend changes in services without restraint, coercion, or reprisal, and have access to the Department of Public Health, Social Services, and the Long-Term Care Ombudsman. These are basic human rights, and I urge you to support them. Please support all three of these bills to help residents of long-term care facilities and their families have more of a voice in their own lives and living conditions. They can offer us a unique and necessary perspective on what is happening, and more importantly, what needs to happen in these facilities. These voices should be encouraged and not stifled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aronha. Are there questions or comments from the members? Being none, I want to thank you for taking the time to speak to us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my privilege, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Barrett, followed by Gerald Grant.
Thank you, Senator Miller, and good afternoon, Senator Miller and Representative Phipps, and to the distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Matt Barrett. I'm the President and CEO of the Connecticut Association of Healthcare Facilities. We're the state's trade association and advocacy organization for 160 skilled nursing facilities and assisted living communities. And I thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony concerning House Bill 6552 and Act concerning the rights of residents in long-term care facilities to use the technology of their choice for virtual connections to family, friends, and other persons. The proposed legislation establishes a nursing home resident's right to the use of technology of their choice that facilitates virtual monitoring or virtual visitation. We recommend that the provisions on Line 13 allowing a legally liable relative who is not a conservator, guardian, or healthcare representative to provide consent for the use of their monitoring or visitation technology be additionally required to provide verification that the resident was unable to provide consent and that these assertions be properly witnessed by impartial parties. We're also recommending that the provisions in subsection C or subdivision C-1 on Line 58, requiring the nursing home to provide Internet access, electricity, and a power source for the monitoring or visitation technology at no cost to a resident, be clarified as follows. First, and we think this is consistent with the intent of the provision, the language should be strengthened to require a Medicaid pass-through cost reimbursement add-on for any costs associated with both necessary Internet upgrades and any upgrades required for electricity and power supply, and also in conformity with applicable federal, state, and local life and safety and fire code requirements. Second, we're asking that there be a provision that establishes that in no event should the nursing home be required to provide the Internet access, electricity, or a power source if doing so would compromise or interfere with the electronic medical records transmission, medical equipment used by the facility to support the care provided, and once more, in conformity with the applicable federal, state, or local life, safety, and fire protection requirements. And finally, for the situations where roommates refuse to consent to the use of virtual monitoring, we recommend a clarifying revision to the language at Lines 105 through 116 that would assure that any efforts required of the facility to seek an acceptable accommodation be unbiased and respectful of the non-consenting roommate and the resident seeking the virtual monitoring. As drafted, we're concerned that the nursing home's intervention would have the appearance that the facility is attempting to persuade the roommate to consent when they have previously refused consent with no involvement from the nursing home whatsoever. A better approach would be to track the process now in place for addressing issues between roommates that may arise. Specifically, federal rules found in the Code of Federal Regulations already require a nursing home to make reasonable efforts to accommodate resident needs and preferences, and this is commonly an authority used to address issues of this type. And once more, Senator Miller, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify in the bill, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the members? Representative Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Matt, for briefing us. So as you read your suggestions, I was listening to the one about trying to get Medicaid to reimburse the facility, if I understood it correctly, for the electric use of plugging in these devices. Is that... Did I understand it correctly?
It's the... Representative Wilson, it's the provision that begins on Line 63 that concerned us. It reads that the technology be considered, or the improvements be considered a capital improvement eligible for a higher rate of reimbursement for a nursing home facility under the provisions of subsection F of 17B340. That's a Medicaid provision. And the way we read that, we think the intent is that the authors of the bill would like to see any costs associated with implementing these technologies be reimbursable to the facility. And the way this language reads, I think we could easily construe that it would be eligible for reimbursement, but not guaranteed for reimbursement, number one. And number two, it would be some sort of add-on to the Medicaid per diem rate that the facilities have, whereas we would think it much more appropriate that any costs associated here would be an actual dollar-for-dollar reimbursement add-on, similar to a grant and aid to the facility. But this would be under the Medicaid program, so it would be reimbursable under the general provision that is 50% covered by the federal government. But under the pandemic, we have, I think, an additional 6.2 federal matching rate. So it's like 56% federal matching if you do it under Medicaid.
So my brain goes to how in the world would the facility be able to measure, on, let's say, a per-room basis, the electricity used by these devices? That's, in my mind, the first technical question. And then the second one is, well, if my patient is not on Medicaid and they're either private pay, private insurance, or, let's say, short-term, three-month stay or whatever for rehab of a broken hip or something on Medicare, this sounds like a nightmare to me.
Well, thank you very much, Representative Wilson, for that question. It gives me the opportunity to qualify or clarify that under no circumstances would there be the nursing facility seeking any reimbursement for the cost of the electricity or electric usage. The cost would be associated with having to make infrastructure changes to the room in the event that the power supply were in a place that couldn't accommodate the device, or there was competition for use of that power supply from, say, an electric bed or some other medical equipment that required electricity. And so there arose at least the concern that there might be circumstances where that room would need to be rewired and that power outlet need to be revamped and perhaps even moved. And so in the same way that Internet improvements may carry with them considerable costs, we just wanted to make sure that similarly, if there were supply issues that had considerable cost for the nursing facilities, they also be captured. And what we think is the bill's intent, which is to create a Medicaid provision that would cover those costs.
Well, thank you for that explanation, and it just says to me that in everything that we write, there's always unintended consequences. So we should be very careful on how we do that writing. Thank you very much, Matt, and thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, and thank you, Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Representative Wilson. Representative Case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Matt. How are you?
Good evening, Representative Case.
So going back to this bill, where do we fall? Because we've been doing this for a few years now in another committee. Where do we fall with HIPAA on this stuff?
I think this year's bill is very carefully and thoughtfully constructed and drafted that addresses so many of the issues that have... That I think have caused us to believe that previous versions of the legislation were underdeveloped, perhaps. And so this bill does address privacy issues. It addresses confidentiality issues. It addresses consent issues and costs. That's a lot of alliteration of "sees," I understand. But the legislation that the committee is considering this year, I think, addresses really so many, if not all, of those underlying issues. And we're commenting on several of the provisions that I think the ambiguous language of the bill just could use some more fine-tuning or more narrowly tailored language.
So from what I hear from you when you're... When Russell Wilson was asking questions as far as the electricity and things like that, this... And I'm in no way, you know... I want to understand, you know, that people need to see what's going on within the rooms and that, you know. I explained to you once before, my brother was one of the first in DDS to have it, but it was only to take a picture of his head for HIPAA reasons because you're not supposed to see anything else that goes on in the room. So we just don't want this to take priority over any other medical equipment, and a lot of our facilities are older, but we've got to make sure that there's capacity to actually take on the use of this, correct?
That's correct. But let's be clear. The bill as drafted would allow the video monitoring of the full person. That really is controlled by either the resident themselves or the resident's representative, which, you know, in the way this bill is constructed, could be a conservative or guardian. And that sort of speaks to one of our earlier recommendations that the broad category of a legally liable relative, because the authority is so encompassing, it's a significant authority to be able to consent on behalf of another person. And what they're consenting to would actually be the opportunity to capture on video and include on audio some of the most sensitive things that happened in skilled nursing facility care in terms of patient care to nursing home residents. But the bill does sort of address that those issues have to be elaborated up front and that they can... And they have to be spelled out in very clear terms, what is actually going to be captured. And insofar as those... What's captured on film or video or in audio, you know, is not really an unlimited right to the resident themselves when they have a roommate, the bill makes a great effort to try to get the consent of the roommate. And so it goes as... It goes far, but I don't think it would necessarily address the issue of what is being captured. That's going to be decided by the resident or the resident's representative. The nursing home would have no role in determining that.
Which I can understand. So is the concept that these are being able to be put out on the web? They're being able to be put through Wi-Fi so the families at home can see what's going on, or is this all...
It would be arstrong. It would be our strong objection that any of these images or video or streaming be used on social, you know, on the internet in any way, shape, or form. And it's one of the reasons why I think the bill includes provisions addressing the misuse. I don't think there's a way to really, in a foolproof way, guarantee that the information, you know, can be contained, but it goes, the bill makes an attempt at trying to address that issue. I do want to emphasize, we are not the authors of the bill, but I do, I do respect that they made an attempt to address that issue, but I don't think the bill attempts or provides a guarantee that the information could not be improperly used.
Yeah, because that was one of the concerns at an earlier date of making sure that we could have a firewall that would leave the information within the building. But I know there's probably a lot of other people that have questions, but have employees weighed in on this as to different groups? Because they're the ones who are going to be on the video also.
No, I'm not aware of any that they have weighed in specifically on House Bill 6552.
Okay. I think you, we've been working on this, and maybe we can get a happy medium so people can feel comfortable, especially during COVID time, not being able to get into the facility. I think that's more of the push right now. But we were talking earlier on families being able to come in and set up a camera that they could watch at home on their phone. That's what we were talking about a few years ago, which we were totally against, because once you put it out, there's no way of stopping it of where it could go. That's kind of.
Right, I appreciate that very much. This bill does allow that.
It does allow for it to go stream.
Yes, this, I think, if you read the bill in its totality, it really creates a resident's right to choose the technology and use it for their purposes, so long as it doesn't impede on the rights or infringe on the rights of another person, that would be principally a nursing, a roommate, and so long as a full range of consents. And I think they are strong. I think they could be a little bit stronger, as indicated in our testimony. But so long as all those provisions are addressed, then this bill would allow internet streaming of the type that you have just expressed.
And when you're allowing internet streaming, you're allowing the family member who has an internet stream do whatever they want with that video or that stream, correct? Because you can't stop them once it's out there.
Well, the bill makes an attempt to first say that you must obtain the resident's permission. And so without the residence, in the event that a nursing home resident would be able to provide that provision, in other words, had the capacity to do so and they weren't otherwise conserved or had a guardianship, then I believe they could, they could express that that not be allowed. But as the bill does indicate, there are several different entities that could act on behalf of the resident, you know, and how they would, you know, come to that conclusion or how they would limit the use of the material is really, is really the resident's choice in this bill. That's how, at least, I read it. I know there are a number of other speakers. I think, I think that's the intent. I think that was expressed by the ombudsman and some of the earlier speakers that it'd be for that purpose.
I thank you, Mr. Barrett, and just one last point, one last question for us to think about as a committee. I know, Senator, you're coming into this right in the crux of it, but, you know, there's got to be the, from what I believe, there's got to be the thought of the facility and the employees also. Because yes, we're looking to protect the residents, we're looking to protect mom and dad, grandma, grandpa, but, you know, there's also others that are going to be on this video and this feed that could possibly go out and be in the cloud. And I just think that there's a lot of things to be careful of, but we do want to make sure that our loved ones have the best care possible. I think we're going down a road to try and do that, but there's a lot of things that we need to tighten up. And Matt, I thank you for coming forward, and I'm sure we'll work for our friends.
Thank you, Representative Case.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, sir, and thank you for your comments. So there aren't any more members that would like to speak? Mr. Barrett, thank you very much. You gave us a wealth of information and things to consider as we pursue the drafting of this bill. So thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Senator Miller and Representative of the Aging Committee. It was a pleasure to testify in front of you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Stacy Altimari has joined. So it would be Stacy followed by Jerel Gray. Sorry, Jerel. Thank you, Stacy.
I'm sorry I got on so late. So I probably missed a lot, and this might be a repeat. I did send in a testimony, my biggest testimony is my mother's rights. It appears that during this whole COVID thing, the rights of the residents has been pushed to the side, and I want to say ignored, but pushed to the side. And I understand that everyone is so concerned about their safety and all of that. But in the process, you have literally stripped them of any rights. You've stripped them of the right to go outside. You've stripped them of the right to see their family. You stripped them of the right to go out and visit or go to doctor's appointments or go, there's a lot of things that my mother was stripped of because of this isolation and quarantine and still is. Just today, I mean, I've been fighting for a month to get my mother outside, and my mother doesn't mind the cold, and I understand that most people in the nursing homes don't like the cold, but my mother's not that way. She loves to be outside and bundled up. She could spend a half an hour outside, which is good for her mentally and physically. But in the whole month, I'm being told my mother has the right to stay in bed if she wants to. My mother has the right to not get dressed if she chooses not to. My mother has the right to not use her walker and sit in her wheelchair. My mother has those rights, but if she wishes to be outside, all of a sudden, she doesn't have that right. Who has the right to determine what her rights are? And, and let's face it, those other rights are convenient for the nursing home, because when my mother's in bed and not up and about, she's less that they have to care for. She's in bed and she's doing her own thing, and they don't have to worry about her or watch her as much. But if she's up and about and outside, then all of a sudden, their responsibilities are front and forward, and they have to do something. They might have to have somebody out there with us or just keeping an eye on us, or they might have to have somebody there to make sure she walks instead of using her wheelchair all the time. I will tell you, in the year that this has happened, my mother's mental stability has declined a great deal. And she is literally in her wheelchair 99% of the time, because it's easier than getting somebody to help her walk with her walker. And I understand that the staffing and the shortage on those staffings has a lot to do with that. I have been fighting nursing homes for the last 20 years, from one family member to another, for more accountability, for more visibility, because I want to know what those counts are every day. And every day, for a while there, I was calling to get those counts on who the staff was. And the counts I were getting were numbers like, well, this is who's scheduled, but it wasn't the actual counts. So when we make that, make sure that it's actual counts, because actual counts are the real people that show up. So you might have eight people on, scheduled, but there's only three that show up or four that show up for a facility of 100 people? That's just not okay. That's just incomprehensible, especially when you're talking a long-term care facility or nursing home, where most of those people need care, need hands-on, and they need to know that someone's going to be there for them. And my heart goes out to every single one of those eight.
I interrupt, but you recommend of your time. If you could, please just wrap it up. Thank you.
Certainly. So here's my last thing to say. There are prisoners out there who have more rights than my mother does right now. And my mother has been tried and sentenced without a jury. She's been put into a home because of her consequences, but she never asked for us to literally shut the doors on her so that she has zero, zero rights, zero, nothing. So think about that, because it's time we open those doors, because I've seen enough that I don't want her in there anymore. And if there's one more shutdown, I will go and take her out. Thank you, Senator Miller, and for the rest of you, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. I was, in your testimony, you didn't specify what you're testifying on, which bill?
It was the cameras. It was the 6552.
Okay.
Is that the number? Yeah, it was, I was testifying on that, because I really wanted to see what was going on. I wanted to see my mother in bed more than up.
All right, thank you. Representative Paul, you have your hand raised.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Stacy, thank you very much, and I understand your pain, and I understand the situation that your, that your mother is in, because I've, I have lived it. You asked questions, and it seemed to me that at some point you were directing your frustration at this committee. This committee is, just for your information, is trying to fix the very problems that you see. And for the couple times that you asked, you know, who took away my mother's rights, who, you know, locked her in, the rest of that, the answer is the Governor Lamont. So I'm sure I'll get some flashback from that, but, you know, as far as having, you know, access on a limited basis or some accountability in care, the legislature was part and parcel removed from the process on March 13th of 2020. Thank you very much. I hope things work out well with your mom.
Thank you. I appreciate your response, and I do understand this is an organization that did not put her there or did not create this situation, but I also understand that you, right now, have the ability to make sure that are important.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for the interruption. Representative, will you make sure your mics are on mute, please? And so, Ms. Altimari, let me say this, that I too had a dad in a facility and pre-COVID, and there were days that I left there in tears. So the only thing that COVID has done is that it's highlighted and exacerbated the issues with our long-term care facilities, and it's something that we, as a state, need to take serious. It is not just this, there are other areas as well. So I'm sorry that you had to, you're going through what you're going through and as well as your mom, and I can say, I don't know what I would have done had my father been in this situation. So I cannot imagine what you're going through. So thank you for coming and testifying before us today. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
We next have Mr. Jerel, I don't know if it's Mr. or Ms., Jerel Gray.
Okay, Lamont, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
You can hear me?
We can hear you, Mrs. Gray. If you could just turn your video on.
Okay, start my video. There we go. Good, okay. Good afternoon, Aging Committee members at all. I am Jerel Gray. I'm an elder person born and raised in Connecticut, and I am testifying today in favor of Bill Number 6553, which is an act protecting property owners age 50 and over from foreclosure. Excuse me. The bill in Section 1 seeks to protect Connecticut taxpayers age 50 and over from the perpetration of municipalities placing excessive and unfair tax liens on the property of Connecticut elder persons. I reviewed the submitted written testimony of other constituents, and I saw that almost entirely, these submissions have been made by the tax collectors of various Connecticut municipalities. These tax collectors' testimonies, without exception, oppose the passing of this bill. There are only three written testimonies submitted by Connecticut elder person citizens, me included, and all of us support this bill. I come to my participation in addressing this bill from a very different and very painful perspective from that which the tax collectors provide as reasoning for their opposition to this bill, that being their litany of opposing the bill on basis of fairness and equity, inequality, and protection and efficiency. On the surface, these would appear to be reasonable arguments against giving Connecticut elder persons supposedly special treatment. But what appears on the surface is so entirely unrelated to what lies beneath the surface and the subject of taxing of the property of Connecticut elder persons. What lies beneath the surface is so much of what is being done to Connecticut elder persons by various, quote, interested parties in and by Connecticut equity courts, the Connecticut governmental agencies, the Connecticut politicians and legislators, and official actors at all, is so devoid of equality and equity and fairness that the justification of using the arguments of fairness and equal treatment and equity are so far removed from the reality that they are in themselves ludicrous and farcial as a defense of treating elder persons the same as other persons located and/or residing in Connecticut. In my written testimony, which I implore you to read, I provide as context a very brief historical review of my and my family's, family members' treatment by the, quote, interested parties whom I have just referenced here. In summary, my Great Depression-era parents came up from absolutely nothing. They came up from being extremely poor in 1930s Bridgeport, Connecticut. My mother's earliest terrified memory being hiding in the closet with her mother while the landlord banged on the door as he came to collect the rent. My father's earliest memory being growing up in a project and running through grocer's garbage bins looking for discarded vegetables to bring home in order for his mother to make soup to eat. If you could take the time to read my written testimony, it tells, as I have told in prior submitted testimony to both this Aging Committee and the Labor and Public Relations, Public Employees Committee, of how elder persons in Connecticut, especially those with property and/or assets, are targeted prey of a rapaciously predatory money-making racket. It tells of how elder persons are targeted prey to a collusive, collaborative, Rico-style business enterprise comprised of probate and elder law and DSS.
You're reaching the end of your three minutes. If you could please just.
All right, I'll wrap it up. Elder municipal agents who are stripping Connecticut elder persons of their civil rights and all rights of self-governship for purpose of these predators, then sentencing their prey to being under complete control of probate disappointed conservatives and guardians who then take complete ownership and control of the elder person's assets and properties of these assets and are transferred into the pockets and coffers of the predators as payment for their surfaces of so-conducting rape and pillage upon their victims. This human trafficking business is a huge insider's cottage industry all over this country, and it is arguably the worst in Connecticut, where residents, where reside so many ripe for the plugging elder persons with assets. This raping of Connecticut elders is a public corruption at its most unbridled and contained, as all the operative players are complicit, collaborative, conspiratorial, and participating in stealing from the now helpless elder prey for their own mutual self-benefit. I will conclude by saying, our own U.S. Senator Dick Blumenthal has testified and sponsored bills exposing the corruption of Connecticut probate courts, particularly probate Connecticut courts. Connecticut probate courts currently have.
You've extended your time.
Okay. Do I have any questions that I can answer?
I'm going to call Representative Vargas.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Jerel, I just like, I just have one question. When I was, I'm the, I'm the introducer to this bill, and I'm a strong supporter of this bill to protect the properties of seniors. And when I was studying this issue, I asked the legislative. when I was studying this issue, I asked the Legislative Commissioner's Office, the LCO, to do some research on this issue, uh, on how people who are in situ, in a situation like this could defend themselves. And they inquired from the judicial system and the, from the judges of what there was available for people. And they came up with all these programs that allegedly help people mediation programs, uh, programs that people can avail themselves to, to protect their property. Uh, do you think those programs really help at all?
No, no, absolutely not. It is a very, very, um, inborn, completely encapsulated. It's definitely a, a racket. It's a system, and all those are, are, are lip service. They, they are, um, red herrings. They are, they, there is nothing. Once you are targeted, once you are targeted, and they want your money, the probate racket, the conservatorship guardianship racket, the, um, that is the, that's the power driving force. It is the number one elder industry in America right now. As all of the, uh, so many people are becoming elders, unless they've got you in your sights, unless they've got you in their sights, you are lost. We went from having nothing, my family having nothing, to building fifteen million dollars worth of assets, and every bit of it has been stolen. Every bit of it has been stolen. I spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on lawyers trying to, um, get through to this, and they, they just, they, they were part of the problem. They, you know, they took the money.
Darrell, one of the, one of the things I've been told, and I've been told this by many, many people, that even though there allegedly is a mediation program and all these assistance programs, that they don't really tell you about them. And that finally, if you do find out about them, they say it's too late to avail yourself of them.
Well, what, are you, what kind of mediation programs, uh, Mr. Vargas, are you specifically?
Well, you know, in terms of, uh, in terms of before foreclosure happens, they are, they're supposed to have a mediation program where you can avert the foreclosure and avail yourself of those.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a, uh, thank you for clarifying that. That's, that's not what I'm talking about at all. I am at the end stage right now of my home being taken by the town of Stratford. It's right, real time right now being taken as a foreclosure. But the twelve years that preceded this, that's part of the fifteen million dollars worth of assets that have been taken. The power driving, the whole power behind this is the probate court. It's the probate court. And once they decide that they are going to come after you, it is a, it's, it's a streamlined, very, very smooth system for them where you just can't get out. My mother, I'll just give you an example. My mother, and it's in town of Stratford, so you know who I'm talking about. Town of Stratford, um, with the judge, it's a probate judge in there. They, um, my mother's attorneys and a town attorney, a town of Stratford attorney petitioned for my mother who was not even a Connecticut resident anymore, a Connecticut visiting Florida resident up here staying in this Stratford cottage with me that she bought and paid for in the seventies, paid cash for. Um, what happened was in spring of two thousand and nine, while she was up in Connecticut visiting, a petition to the Stratford, and this is exactly how it's done. It doesn't matter if you have, you know, a thousand dollars, a million dollars, fifteen million in our case. Um, they petitioned to the Stratford probate judge to take my mother, who was multi-modality, um, medically diagnosed as capable and competent, in no need of a conservator, to be placed under involuntary conservatorship of person and estate.
And you know, now that you mentioned that, Darrell, recently I, I saw on a, on, I think, I believe it was either Netflix or HBO.
Yep.
A movie, uh, about it called I Care A Lot.
I Care A Lot.
And it's similar, it's similar to what.
Oh, exactly. And there's another one called Guardians.
It's similar to what Representative Gonzalez and I have been through with juvenile. And with the whole thing of guardians for young people.
Guardianship is, is called conservatorship in Connecticut.
Issue. And, uh, because we had a probate issue over twenty years ago in Hartford where the estate of, her name was Donahue, was liquidated by the probate court. And that led to West Hartford separating their probate court from the Hartford probate court because of the amount of corruption that had happened with people's estates. So my heart goes out to you. But, you know, we, I know we have a lot of other witnesses that want to testify, so.
You know, thank you, Mr. Representative Vargas, for the question. Is there any other question, are there questions for Ms. Gray, though? But thank you for your, your comments, Representative Vargas. Were there any other comment, uh, questions for Ms. Gray? Well, what's good. Thank you, Ms. Gray, for, um, sharing that. I mean, what's good. That's a very, very powerful testimony. Um, and thank you for your words.
I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. So we're going to move on to the next speaker. The next speaker is, um, Louis Roman.
Hello, I'm Louis Roman. Hello?
Yes, we're here, you're Louis.
Okay, yes, sir. Yes, good afternoon. I'm Louis Roman. I'm the president of the Pro Se group, which is comprised of about close to a thousand families throughout the state of Connecticut who in one way or another are involved, who in one way or the other are involved in a foreclosure, uh, case, and they're on the verge of losing their homes. We've been doing this for almost twenty-two years, and we've learned a great deal about the process. One of the difficulties that people don't understand is that we go to a court for justice. Unfortunately, what we get is not justice, especially when it comes to real estate and the foreclosure process. I'm very familiar with, uh, Ms. Gray's, uh, case and her family's condition, and the, the amounts that she's mentioning is a lot. It's fifteen million plus, actually, because her family used to own a health food store in Stratford, the only one at the time, and they were able to sell it for that amount of money to the current buyers. And I'm an international banker, but I was a vice president for J.P. Morgan Chase. I have an extensive amount of experience in banking and, 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 and financial, uh, analysis. My, my, my recent experience with the tax liens, this is an issue that is a revelation and something I never expected to see. Uh, tax liens used as a weapon or a tool to take people's homes when in fact the liens are in effect, uh, I would say fabricated. But I guess the best way to explain it is to give you a scenario. One of our people, we have people that go and are court watchers. They see what goes on in the courts. They report back. As a matter of fact, uh, Cheryl, uh, Darrell, uh, Gray is one of those people. Uh, we have people that go to the town clerk's office and more or less go through records to do, uh, title searches. In one particular case, one of our people came back and she said, look, Lou, you're not going to believe this. They were pulling up your file, your land, your records. And I had over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equity in my property. Uh, and what I discovered was I was targeted. I am going to be seventy-four years old in April, and I am a senior. And I am appalled at the, 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 the land grab uh, that the, this cottage industry that's been created and, and the public corruption that's involved in this whole process. Uh, I learned a great deal. I have people in different places to tell me a great deal. I, I have a, uh, the largest foreclosure mill in Connecticut used to be called Hunt, Chester, Leeward, and Jacobson. Well, Sam Chester, one of the original founders, and I became very good friends, and he gave me a great deal of inside information. He retired from the firm uh, because he got cancer, and they pretty much kicked him out of the firm, and he was very bitter, but he was very open with me. And he gave me information that was shocking. Um, I was next door neighbor to a Superior Court Judge, Judge Holden, William Holden. I've known Bill for thirty years, and he was, um, when he became a judge from being the chief public defender in Fairfield County, Bill.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're reaching the end of your time. If you could please just wrap up your last thought. Thank you.
Right. The issue is public corruption and a cottage industry. Okay. And I, I would like this committee to be aware of the fact that this is something that is a huge moneymaker, and it's in the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. All of it can be substantiated. The public need to know, you should know, that this act, that sixty-five, fifty-three, we strongly support it. We want this to help us. Otherwise, there's going to be nothing left.
Thank, so thank you. Are there any questions, um, from our members? I see Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, uh, Mr. Roman for coming forward. Um, you, you've got my curiosity. Um, so, uh, as, as this scheme plays out, who ends up with all this real estate?
Very interesting point. Okay, uh, there are two cartels, let's call it that. And I mean, that's in, in real terms. Uh, one handles the, uh, 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 real estate property liens, tax liens. That'll be Ed Marcus Law Firm out of New Haven. And the other one is out of, uh, Judah J. Epstein out of, uh, Bridgeport. Now, what, Mr. Epstein and I go back thirty years. I've known him since he was a child. I watched him go through everything, including law school, and, and, and I know how he got where he is. I was shocked recently when I saw an article in a luxury condo publication out of Florida where Judah bought a condo for six point three million dollars. Now, his family's always been middle-class. And by the way, just so that you know, sir, he only works for the city of Bridgeport as an outside collector. He does nothing else but WPCA tax liens. All right. He, prior to him getting so incredibly wealthy, he was bragging to me that his organization, which is affiliated with a Hasidic group in New York that owns six thousand five hundred units of housing in the Bridgeport, in the city of Bridgeport. That's a, that's a very substantial portfolio. And they're deriving revenues from rents and, or they flip them, but primarily they hold them for rent. The bottom line is all of this is, can be substantiated. We've, I did a, uh, there was a reporter for the Hartford Current who I know very well. He did an investigation. He checked the Secretary of State's land record. I, I gave him the name of an individual that Judah was telling me was the bagman, effectively. His name is, uh, uh, Liskoff, Russell Liskoff. He's a, an assistant city attorney for the city of Bridgeport. Russell had forty-five different holding, real estate holding companies in his name registered in Connecticut. And he was, the addresses, this is the mind blower. The addresses that these companies were domiciled was the city attorney's office in Bridgeport. You want to talk about in-your-face and public corruption? This is an unbelievable situation. Now, some of you may look at this and say, well, it's not real. Well, I got news for you. Do you know that the city of Bridgeport just, uh, arrested the chief of police? I mean, not the city of Bridgeport, but the federal, uh, the FBI. Chief of Police was, 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 is, is going to be incarcerated. The, uh, the director of, of, uh, human resources in Bridgeport, the mayor in Bridgeport was in prison for seven years. And they were involved in this same little business going on back then. And then he came back in and he took it over again. There is something really amiss here that is beyond comprehension, really. And, 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 and it's funny because the same thing that applies to that particular movie that, um, I Care A Lot, it's, it's applicable with what's happening with the seniors in, in the, in the, in the tax lien business. Now, one last comment, if I may. The, the, uh.
One last comment, please.
Yes, sir. Last comment is very simple. Sample case, woman by the name of Baldino. Uh, she's eighty-eight years old. She's a widow. She lives on a piece of property. She has very little mortgage with, uh, and, and, and no, no debt. She has about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in equity. She's, she's asked, she's asked to turn around and, and, and enter into a reverse mortgage. She takes the reverse mortgage because she's a widow. She's living alone. And the unbelievable part of this whole thing is that when they did the closing for that mortgage, she had no representation. She was alone in her house. The, the mortgage company came to her house. Uh, two individuals came. She signed the papers. They gave her a reverse mortgage. They took title to her house, but they didn't tell her. They told her, you have to pay your taxes. Six months later, she gets a call from the bank. The bank says, you don't have to pay the taxes anymore. She stopped making her tax lien payments. I'm sorry, her tax payments, uh, which she had been paying at three hundred dollars a month for years, that after six months, it was over. Guess what happened? They put a tax lien on her house. And guess what happened? They foreclosed on her house. Now she's in a convalescent home. Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Um, I think, I, I think I saw Senator, uh, Miller's hand up.
Yes, sir. Senator Miller?
Yes, uh, I lowered my hand, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Representative Vargas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I've been told that it doesn't matter once they start this lien procedure and this foreclosure procedure. It doesn't matter if they violate state law, federal law, that unfortunately some of our judges have become enablers of the situation, that they run roughshod over the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is a federal law. They run roughshod over state law, federal laws. That's in the experience of the people you sent out to monitor these courts.
Absolutely. Absolutely. They, it's, they, the judges are legislating from the bench. There's a select group of judges, uh, some of which and, and are, are, are handpicked by the chief court administrator. And he puts them in different positions. Um, you know, Judge Barbara Bellis, Judge, uh, he, he picks, uh, uh, retired judge magistrates who are just thrilled to be back on the bench again and, and, and actually, uh, be involved on a daily basis, not, and rather than sitting home or playing golf. Uh, you know, once a judge has power, he has a hard time losing it. The answer is absolutely yes. They are enablers. They're participants. Now, uh, there is an FBI investigation. There is an FBI agent from the public corruption, the, uh, uh, task force who's involved in this. I work with her. I more or less keep her informed, but the, the, what I've learned with, about the legislator, legis, legislature here in Connecticut is you're in the blind. You're really oblivious to what's really going on. You get Pat Carroll telling you that, uh, there are no, you know, we're, we're, we're remediating the situation. We're modifying people's loans and that to the tune of eighty to ninety percent. Now, I got that information from none other than the Banking Commissioner. Jorge Perez told me in his office. He asked me the question. He said, Lou, what do you think is the percentage of people that are having their homes, uh, mediated and modified? And I said, if we're lucky, maybe two percent. He said, would you believe ninety percent? I said, no, impossible. Who said that? He told me it was Patrick Carroll on a report that he was filing to the state legislature that he was required to file as a result of the, uh, the, 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 the millions of dollars that were granted to the state of Connecticut for that purpose out of the twenty-five billion dollar interstate settlement. So there is so much dirt here, but the important part that I like about, you can verify it. We hired a, a former state police sergeant who was in charge of, uh, the, a major crime squad to work for us. And that, uh, sergeant is, is a private investigator. And he got into things that I was quite surprised that he did, but he learned a great deal. Things that will come out in, 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 in a criminal investigation because we will surrender that information to the FBI.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions?
No, there aren't any, Mr. Roman. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next we have David, and I apologize if I don't correct your name, pronounce your name correctly. Is it Kowinski?
Uh, Kowinski.
Kowinski. Hi, how are you? Thank you for joining us. And followed by Mark, uh, McGolden. Thank you. You may continue. You may start.
Madam Chair, could I excuse myself for one second? Uh, Rep. Case has lost his internet connection, and he just wanted me to inform the group.
Okay. Thank you very much, Representative Wilson. You may begin, sir.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Uh, first off, I wanted to express my congratulations to Madam Chair Miller on her recent election to the State Senate. Um, good afternoon, co-chair Senator Miller and Representative Phipps and other distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is David Kowinski. I am tax collector for the town of Fairfield, as well as co-chair of the Legislative Committee for the Connecticut Tax Collector Association. As an association, tax collectors are opposed to raise Bill six, five, five, three, an act protecting property owners age fifteen older from foreclosure. The mission of our association in part is to promote uniformity in the practice and application of statutory procedures when enforcing collection of property taxes. Treating every taxpayer the same in an equitable manner ensures that tax collections are efficient and effective in order to fund municipal budgets each year. The proposed legislation challenges our mission by applying different age guidelines to how we enforce property tax collections. The age of a property tax owner is not part of the data collected or shared with tax collectors, making it nearly impossible to determine who would be. making it nearly impossible to determine who would be eligible and who would not. Approximately seventeen tax collectors submitted testimony in opposition to this legislation because they all understand that it would harm, rather than benefit, all taxpayers, including those fifty and older. It is misleading in that it could encourage those fifty and older to delay paying their taxes timely without consequence and accrue high debt. For example, a home valued at two hundred thousand would not be leaned under this current legislation until the debt exceeds thirty thousand dollars. In some towns, it could take five to seven years for a taxpayer's delinquency to exceed thirty thousand dollars. This would in turn increase taxes for everyone, including seniors, to make up for the shortfall in revenue. The potential of a lien is an incentive to pay timely, and the filing of liens protects the town's interests and ensures that the revenue is received in a timely manner. To have a system in place that encourages those fifteen older to accrue such high debt would be irresponsible on our part as a public officials and would lead to severe consequences for the financial health of municipalities and the vital services they fund, such as education, law enforcement, and fire protection. Therefore, the Connecticut Tax Collector Association is strongly opposed to HB six five five three, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I have a question. Can you take us through the lien process?
Sure, so again, the filing of the lien is an incentive to pay timely. It protects the town's interests in the event that the homeowner were to sell, refinance. But the lien, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that a tax collector is going to foreclose. A tax collector has three types of enforcement at their disposal. Traditional foreclosure, foreclosure, they can do a tax sale auction, or they can do a lien assignment. You'd be hard pressed, the majority of tax collectors are gonna say that they're not gonna do these enforcement measures unless they absolutely have to. We actually support having guardrails in place or protections in place to prevent these from happening. We've even discussed this with the Banking Committee during this session. The Banking Committee is also, you know, they've also discussed lien assignments. And the issue that comes with when the assignment is lien, I mean, when, when the lien is assigned, some of these investors will not communicate to the residents or the taxpayers, and they will foreclose on them. So it comes down to the tax collector needs to do their due diligence, and most do. They do their due diligence. They research these investors, and they make sure that they are assigning these liens to an investor that they can trust. And most tax collectors, and this is what we mentioned, the Banking Committee, is that we want guardrails in place. There are guardrails, and by guardrails, I mean there's required notifications when you assign a real estate tax bill. There are not currently required notifications, once it's assigned, for sewer use, sewer assessments. We would be in support of that, to add that. We're also in support of adding guardrails such as, and again, this theme of treating everyone the same, being equal, we would argue that, you know, don't do an enforcement action like a tax sale, a lien assignment until the debt is three or four years delinquent or more. So have this, you know, have a criteria in place, and many tax collectors already use a criteria like this. They'll say, we're, we're not going to enforce collection until you owe more than three or four years of taxes. Because we want to work with these taxpayers and, you know, do everything possible to, and, and there's notifications. We send delinquent statements. By law, before a lien is filed on their property, we have to send an intent to lien notice fifteen days before the lien is filed, notifying them and warning them of what is gonna happen. So the majority of tax collectors, we, we support organization, guardrails, protections. We, we don't want our taxpayers to get into a situation where they have large debt, and our fear is that this current legislation as written would encourage that. Because without the presence of a lien, there really is no incentive to pay timely. There is all the incentive in the world to defer your taxes and, you know, let that accrue, especially with this current setting of fifteen percent of your assessed value. Like I said, a two hundred assessed value, you have to accrue thirty thousand dollars of tax debt before there's any consequence. And to us, that's problematic because the majority of our residents are over fifty that own property. So, yes, they're gonna, they're, they're not gonna have the consequence of a lien, but they're gonna pay more taxes in the long run because this is gonna be a huge hit to municipal budgets. We are, we, municipal, you know, ninety-five percent or more of a town's revenue is based on property taxes. They depend on a tax collector to collect ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of those property taxes on a yearly basis to fund municipal budgets and all the critical services. So again, if you take away the ability to file a lien, there's no longer incentive to pay timely, and then taxes go up because we have to make up for that shortfall.
Excuse me. So you mentioned that you get, you assign a lien to someone you can trust. What happens if it's assigned to someone you can't trust? That's a bad player, or bad actor, I should say.
Well, that's
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I understand. So I can't, I can't really speak from experience on that. To be honest, I have not done lien assignments, so I'm kind of speaking through my colleagues on this. There, there are, you know, I don't want to name anyone, but there are cities or towns that, you know, we like to believe that this is why that these types of legislations occurs. Because this type of legislation occurs is because there are towns or cities out there that unfortunately have done this, where they don't, they don't do their due diligence. But, you know, for the most part, when I, I, I think of some colleagues that do lien assignments, it is a process where, like I said, they, they research these investors ahead of time. Anyone that, that does, you know, bid for the liens, and they, they make certain that it is someone that they can trust. I, you know, unfortunately, I can't, I can't speak from experience on the, the question that you're asking, though.
Okay, thank you. So I'm interested, so I'm assuming that the proponent, the impetus for this bill is a situation, or I should say, the proponent has been approached by someone, right? So I'm interested to know, since COVID has, the number for your organization, has the number of liens increased since COVID?
At this
I should say.
Yep, at, at this point, it's, it's hard to tell. Because per executive order from the governor, we have been going through either, either or, or both. You could do a tax deferment. In Fairfield, we, our taxes are deferred. So any tax that became due on January first normally had a thirty-day grace period, is currently in the middle of a ninety-day grace period. And some other towns have opted to do a lower interest where their annual eighteen percent interest was reduced to three percent annual during the deferment period. So we haven't really, we haven't gotten numbers as an association from, from every, every town. I think we'll have a better idea at the end of this fiscal year because we were in a deferment at the end of last fiscal year. And I believe, we don't believe there will, there will be another deferment in this current fiscal year. So the current deferment that we're in will end on April first.
Well, thank you for that, and, and, and you're absolutely correct. I guess the point I was trying to get at is I'm concerned with housing, for instance, where there was a moratorium on evictions and that there's, the floodgates are going to be open once the moratorium is lifted. And so I have the same concern about liens, that once we, COVID, we get, and I guess it's post-COVID, that the municipalities may go after these families, you know, putting liens on their properties, and these families losing their properties to no fault of their own.
And, and, and again, that's, that's why, like I said, we are, we are in support of adding guardrails, additional guardrails and protections to the collection enforcement process. So for example, a tax sale auction or a lien assignment, have a uniform statewide policy for every town in Connecticut that says, if you want to go through with this process, then they need to meet some type of threshold or criteria. They need to be, they need to owe three years or more, or four years or more of delinquent taxes. You can't just foreclose simply because you filed the lien. You can't go through. So, but, but our concern is, we have to file this lien because, one, section twelve dash one, I believe it's one seventy-two of the state statutes, there is an incoet lien already, an unrecorded lien, from the date that, for two years from the, the date that the, the property becomes assessed. And so, but, and then additionally, again, I keep saying, it, it's an incentive to pay timely. So when we file the lien, we're just protecting the town's interest. We're not trying to foreclose. We're not trying to take someone's property. We're just trying to ensure that the town taxes get paid. Without that lien mechanism, our concern is that, again, there's no incentive to pay timely anymore, and then municipal budgets suffer.
All right, thank you. That's a very good point. So I would be interested to see your recommendations of the guardrail, your suggestions of the guard that can be put in place. Are there any questions from the groups? Representative Vargas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kluzki, for your testimony.
You're welcome.
As the proponent of the current bill sixty-five fifty-three, the reason I propose this bill, I'm sure that the members who represent, many of them are doing the honorable thing and are making, doing everything they can to make sure the people, that the elderly stay in their home and are not evicted, and that these liens are not abused. I know that for a fact because right here in the city of Hartford, we were able to convince our taxes, as are our mayor and our city council, not to sell the liens to these unscrupulous companies anymore. And Hartford no longer does that. Unfortunately, some sell them in blocks. They'll buy fifty property, fifty liens in a block. They don't even notify the property owner because they like the eighteen percent compounded monthly. They just let the, the, this accrue at a higher and higher level. By the time the person even realizes that they owe money, they go to the town assessor. They tell the town assessor, I'd like to settle. I know I owe five thousand dollars in taxes. I'd like to settle. They say, well, we can't really deal with you because we've sold that to an outside company. They go to the outside company. Now, since you're, we paid the five thousand to the city on your behalf, but we farmed that out to a, to a law firm that specializes in collecting these tax liens. Person finally tracks down the attorneys responsible for this, and they try to settle. They say, sure, you know, if you can come up with a hundred thousand dollars, we'd be happy to settle your case. They said, but I thought it was only five thousand dollars. Yes, but this has been accruing an eighteen percent compounded. There's fees, there's this, there's lawyer's fees, which, by the way, under state law is illegal because state law says only corporation counsel for the city has the right to collect legal fees and recover legal costs. No outside lawyer can represent the municipality. So my question to you, and I've been listening very carefully to what you're saying, and I heard very loud and clear that you said that fifteen percent of the accrued value of the property might take two, one, two, two, might take six, seven years, and that it might hurt your tax collection ability, but that you're willing to still go perhaps three or four years before you foreclose on an elderly person. But let me ask you a question. There, aren't there other ways to address this? For example, can't we take that usury rate of eighteen percent compounded monthly? Is that, could we not reduce that to a more reasonable percentage? What's your thought on that?
Yeah, and so as tax collectors, we're not policymakers. We, you know, we work under state statutes. So if it were to be reduced, we would have, you know, we would just follow, follow that change. So say it goes from eighteen percent down to a uniform, easy rate of, say, twelve percent or one percent a month. We wouldn't have any issue with that, but, but, but again, we're not policymakers. It's, it, it's more likely that, say, CCM, Mayor Selectmen, they would step in and have issue with that because then we're talking about a loss in revenue because interest is something that is budgeted on a yearly basis in all municipalities. So if you go from eighteen to twelve, there's a loss of revenue. It would be no issue for us because, again, our greatest power in bringing in the revenue for municipalities as effectively and efficiently as possible is when all towns, you know, we're, every town's tax collector is doing it uniformly. So, you know, it, it's the same interest rate in Hartford and, and Fairfield. And there's, there's no confusion. There's no discrepancy. So we're, we're enforcing the law the, the same. So
I, I understand that
So as an association, we would be okay with that. It's just, it wouldn't be our call, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, you know, if you're okay with reducing, because I consider that eighteen percent compounded monthly to be usury, frankly. And the, especially, you know, people have worked all their lives to pay off the mortgage on their home twenty years, thirty years. And then all of a sudden to have over some tax lien sold to some unscrupulous outfit out there. How, how would you feel about a state statute that simply would ban the sale of liens to outside parties? This was, this whole, you've probably been listening to the whole cottage industry
Yeah, yeah, no, I, again, I, I would be more in favor of a lot of what the Banking Committee has already suggested this, this session, which is just kind of tightening it up and having those guardrails in place that, that not, not says that after three years of delinquency, you automatically assign the lien. It's just, because mo- most towns may not even do that after three years. It's just having policy in place that says, hey, listen, you cannot even consider assigning a lien until after three years or more. Most towns, Fairfield, in Fairfield, we wouldn't do that after three years. I'm just saying, have policy in place that has a protection like that so that when someone has a lien filed on their property by the municipality, they cannot automatically just go to an enforcement action like that. There, there's a, there's time and a process that's in place before that were to occur.
And why can't the corporation counsel be in charge of the lien and the foreclosure? If it, if it comes to that, why does it need to be farmed down in the first place?
I mean, again, I, I don't, I don't do lien assignments in Fairfield. I can't speak for the other cities and municipalities that we, you know, lien assignments having going on, I want to say for about twenty-five years now in Connecticut. It, it, it works for some towns. It doesn't work for others. It's just, it, it's just one of the tools at our disposal, such as liens, along with tax sales and traditional foreclosures. But I can't, I can't speak for why it works in one town and, and not another.
Well, you've probably heard the testimony of the previous witness who said that a lawyer, a middle-class lawyer, got involved in this business and just bought a six-million-dollar second vacation home in Florida. I read in the newspapers that just a sheriff, a sheriff that serves papers, working for these outfits, earned three million dollars in a year. Now, I know that you can get a job as a uniformed sheriff serving papers with a high school diploma, and that most of these people, you know, are pretty well off if they're making fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year. If they're making, if they're hustling, making eighty or ninety thousand, that's pretty good. But is there any reason why somebody involved in this business was just simply serving papers, earned three million dollars at the expense of putting people out of their property? It just doesn't seem right to me.
Well, from, from what I understand, again, not having experience in doing these actual lien assignments, but from what I understand is that when it comes to the sewer assessments, sewer use bills, when you assign a lien for those, there is no mechanism in place that requires a certain amount of notifications by the investor to the homeowner. And again, we've discussed this with the Banking Committee last week, and we are in favor of adding additional protections like that so that maybe it does weed out and, and push away some of these investors that are a little less trustworthy and, you know, are not as dependable and, and doing these types of things. So, so we are in favor of, as long as it stays uniform, as long as it's same interest rate, you know, and does have to be eighteen, we said, you know, it could be lower. We're looking for uniformity, and also the protections that the Banking Committee is looking for too, as well, so that hopefully it does push away some of those investors that some of these towns have not done their due diligence on.
Well, Mr. Kluzki, I, I agree with you that probably most tax assessors are fair people that are doing their job on behalf of their town, just like I believe that most probate court judges try to do the best they can for the people that show up before their courtroom. And I agree that the guardrails need to be there, probably for some people that aren't really playing by the rules. And if you do have some ideas, I mean, I, I'm more interested in the end result than I am in the specific language of the legislation. So if six, six five five three can be amended in a way that meets your needs, but at the same time reaches the goal, which is to protect seniors from losing their property. I mean, I don't think any of us want to see people put out, become homeless or forced into a nursing home under Medicaid Title Nineteen or whatever because they've lost all the, the equity in their property after a lifetime of work. So I think if we can achieve the goal, I, I'd be interested in looking at, at your recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Kluzki. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm having a conversation with myself here. So thank you, Representative, and thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate you taking the time to testify before us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mark McGoldrick, followed by Ned Morel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
I don't know why my video's not coming up, but, oh, there it is, okay. Good evening, Senator Miller and other members of the Aging Committee. My name is Mark McGoldrick. Senator Miller and other members of the Aging Committee. Uh, my name is Mark McGoldrick. I own and operate six Comfort Keepers. Uh, home care offices across the state of Connecticut. I'm also the current uh, chairman of the Home Care Association of. America Connecticut Chapter. And I'm here to testify uh, in support of Bill nine seventy-four today. Um, I think that um. This bill uh, provides additional protection for seniors and that's always our number one priority. I think the, the additional disclosures that are required, I, I guess I'll back up for a second. The Home Care Association of America. Is an association of employer-based agencies. So what that means is that. Our caregivers are our employees. We hire, train, orient. Uh, manage, supervise, schedule, background check. Um, all the kind of protections you would want when you had a home care caregiver in your home versus. The first gentleman who spoke, Mr. Shalansky, uh, operates as a registry. Um, and that provides, when a, when a homeowner hires a registry, uh, a caregiver from a registry, they. They assume a lot of risk that they uh, aren't necessarily aware of. Um. They become the employer of record. They're supposed to withhold payroll taxes for that uh, caregiver. Um, which they're liable to the IRS for. They're also, um. There's no workers' comp insurance provided to that caregiver. So if they have an accident in the. Uh, senior's home, they're liable, the senior becomes liable for, um. You know, the, the, the healthcare of that individual for the accident they had in their home and, and. Things like theft and those things aren't protected either. So. Seniors take a lot more risk, which they um, currently are unaware of because registries don't have to provide a lot of notice of. Of the business model that they're operating under. And we think that nine seventy-four uh. Will at least um, provide seniors with a little bit more information before they make decisions. On hiring uh, agencies. We also are in support of uh, the non-solicitation language that's included in this bill. As Mr. Markley spoke about earlier. Um, there was a law passed two years ago that would have been nineteen. It was. Not even a separate standalone bill. It was. Uh, snuck into a, to a budget uh, implementer, uh, which kind of tells you how disingenuous the bill really was. Um. And. You know, the bill said it was a ban on non-competes, but it did a lot more than that. A ban on non-competes is just the ability of one caregiver to work for multiple agencies. And that's always been something that. Home care agencies have supported in the state of Connecticut. We encourage it. It's the way that uh.
You're reaching the end of your three minutes. Would you please just?
Sure, sure. It's the way that these people uh, earn the best living, but. Um, the way that the law was written, it also banned non-solicitations. Um, and no hire agreements with clients. So it, 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 it basically eliminated all of the contracts that agencies have. Uh, with their caregivers and their clients to, to run their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. Uh, McGoldrick. So I don't see any hands from the members. Uh. I have a question. So can you tell me what happened? You said that there was in two thousand, did you say two thousand and seventeen?
Uh, nineteen.
Nineteen. So there, in the implementer, they, they changed the, I guess, the non-complete or non-solicitation. So can you talk about that a little more, please? Because I'm interested, and, and you're right, that some of the. Um, caregivers or home caregivers companions work for different agencies to make ends meet. So you're saying, once they remove that, that that took that uh, that ability away from them?
No, so, so. Ostensibly, when they wrote the law, they were saying that they wanted to make sure that it was written in law that caregivers had the right. To work for multiple agencies. So, and we supported that, but. There's kind of three parts of a contract that you have, right? There's a. You can have a non-compete with an employee that says that, that controls where they can or can't work. You can have a non-solicitation with an employee that says they can't solicit your client, right, to take them off the books and work privately for them. Um, and then there's an, there's the, the agreement you have with the client that says, hey, I introduced you to this caregiver. You're not going to try to steal this caregiver privately from me. So those are the three different types of contracts. That that one law banned. So they said it was a ban on non-competes, but it, it, the way the law was written. It eliminated the validity of all of the contracts. That home care agencies have with their clients and caregivers. And, and, and the reason it happened was, uh, there was. It, it, it emanated from DSS. So that's another thing that's kind of interesting here because. You know, Medicare is, is a minority of the caregiving that's given in the state of Connecticut. The vast majority. Is private caregiving, people paying out of their pockets for caregivers. And DSS, uh. I will use the term colluded because I believe that's what it was with uh, a representative uh, on the Human Services Committee. And snuck this bill in and, and, and it became law. And it, it was only a ban on non-competes in the home care industry. It didn't touch any other industry. It, so, I mean, if that doesn't tell you something's not uh, copacetic, then, then I don't know what would.
Right, thank you. Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and tha- thank you, Mark, for uh, your testimony. So I guess the, the question that comes to my mind is, okay, so this was uh, passed in legislation. Um, and what is the result?
The result is now that I can have a caregiver. Uh, steal a client of mine. And take them privately away from me and expose that client to all kinds of risks. There's no backup if, if the caregiver gets sick, right? There's no one supervising that caregiver to make sure that. They're doing their job when they're supposed to be doing their job. Um. You know, imagine if you're dealing with a memory care patient, the, the potential for abuse there. Um. And, you know, the same thing, it, uh, you know, a client can, can do the same thing. I, I introduce a client to a great caregiver. Two weeks later. They can say, hey, you know what? I'm tired of paying these guys. Why don't I pay you? A dollar more than they are and we'll just do it off the books. So it, it. What it does is it invalidates. Every contract that a home care agency has to run its business.
So I just, I, I guess I'll push you then just a little bit further. How has the law affected you and your business?
So I've, you know, I deal with situations every year, um. With clients and caregivers colluding. And the way it works is, uh, I'll get a cancellation notice from a client, you know, we're going to take, terminate services on this date. And at the same time, I get a resignation letter from the caregiver. And I'm like, oh, this is kind of funny, you know, Mary's going because Mrs., you know, Mary quit the same day Mrs. Jones stopped services. And, uh, you know, I can send my care coordinator by the house. Couple days later and, you know, there's Mary's car in the driveway.
And so I think, I think this says that you're the chairman of Home Care Association of America Connecticut Chapter. Um. Uh, I'm sure you're in communication with your associates and colleagues and are they all going through the same thing now because of this law change?
Yes, absolutely. Um. Mr. Markley, actually, we had run a um, a survey uh, of our members on how many people were, were. Were impacted by this law and uh, it was, it was a majority of people who had had, um, had been impacted negatively.
And, and so has anyone complained to the state on what's happening or, or tried to bring this to light?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've tried to, um. We tried to, um. Proposed legislation last year, um, because it got, it got, um, canceled the session so we couldn't. We've, you know, we talked to legislators all the time about it. Um, I spend a fair amount of my time meeting with various legislators. Um, like Senator Slapp, who's on this committee we met with. Uh, over the summer and had some discussions about this. I have an office in West Hartford, um, where he's based. Um. And so we have, we, we, we've tried to reach out to, to all the legislators that we can. We actually met with. Um, some people in the governor's office to, to complain about this as well. So we, you know, that's why we wanted to propose legislation because. The only real impact is through a bill.
And so do you, do you think that uh, six-five-five-three is, is the um, solution to the, the problem here? I'm sorry, not, uh, I'm on the wrong, what's the bill number? Six, uh, nine-seven-five, was it?
It is, um. Hold on a second. I keep getting the numbers wrong.
Representative, I believe it's nine-seven-four.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's nine-seven-four. It's nine-seven-four.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, and that, that, what, what, that, what, nine-seven-four does, it says, listen, the ban on non-competes is fine. But we can't allow for solicitation and that's what it does. It. You know, there was a law similar, similar to the pass to Massachusetts, not just against the home care industry, just generally about non-competes in the state. And they went so far as in their bill to explicitly state that, um. This law did not, in fact, impact non-solicitation agreements, that they were still valid. So. Um, you know, that's, that's another way to kind of, you know, that's another way to amend this bill.
All right. Well, thank you very much uh, for your answer to those questions and we appreciate uh, you taking the time and staying with us this, this long. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative, and I don't see anyone else wanting to speak. So thank you, Mr. McGoldrick, for your testimony.
Thank you, Chairman. Take care.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Meg Morelli, followed by Anna Dorogazi.
Hi, thank you, Senator Miller, uh, members of the Aging Committee. My name is Mag Morelli and I'm the president of Leading Age Connecticut. Membership Association representing not-for-profit provider organizations, serving older adults across the entire field of aging services and senior housing. We were pleased to submit testimony on several bills uh, today, but I'd like to focus my time on House Bill six-five-five-two, an act concerning the rights of residents. And long-term care facilities to use the technology of their choice. This proposal would establish a statutory framework to govern and facilitate the use of technology by residents in nursing homes. This bill offers us the opportunity to put into place a comprehensive state statute. That will establish good public policy on this very important issue. And we believe we need to do it right. Therefore, we provided extensive written comments with the intent of assisting in the development of a statute that addresses the many complex issues and concerns. Of ensuring residents' rights within this highly regulated setting and in consideration of the common situations that impact many nursing home residents. Our priority goal is to ensure that's the self-determination, privacy, and dignity of the nursing home resident. Secondary to this is the issue of the financial impact of the bill's requirement. For providing internet service that can support streaming video surveillance throughout the building. And finally, we are requesting that the managed residential community, communities be removed from the bill. We ask the committee to consider our detailed written comments in a construct, in the constructive manner in which they are presented. And allow us to continue to work with all interested parties to develop and pass a strong and comprehensive statute. We have greatly appreciated the opportunity to discuss, to discuss virtual visitation with the committee earlier in the session. And thank the committee for including some of our suggestions in the bill before you today. But this bill reaches beyond the use of technology for virtual visitation in nursing homes and incorporates the use of technology for virtual monitoring. As such, we are requesting that revisions be made to adequately address the sensitive issues connected to monitoring. And as I, and as I said, we have offered detailed comments to assist with that. To summarize our requests, first, while the bill does incorporate certain procedures to address resident and roommate consent for virtual monitoring. These provisions need to be strengthened to safeguard resident privacy and dignity. And we would like the bill to include a level of consent for use of all video and audio technology. With today's technology, the same device that is used for remote Zoom visit or dropping calls can easily be used for ongoing monitoring or recording. Next, we want to raise, um, excuse me, sorry. Next, we want to raise a concern that the bill has the potential of adding a financial burden to many facilities by requiring that the facility, facility provide internet access that is capable. Of handling multiple streaming video and audio monitoring. While the bill proposes Medicaid reimbursement to cover the capital costs related to the initial upgrades. And the ability to shift some costs to private residents, we don't see these provisions as workable. And would instead request that a grant program be developed to provide the upfront, upfront costs of upgrades. And with respect to the ongoing costs that this be, since this is something outside of the current Medicaid reimbursement formula. Um, that we request that it be reimbursed in a full, um. Through an add-on increase in the Medicaid rates. And finally, the bill applies to long-term care facilities, including not only the nursing home setting, but also the managed residential community. Which is the location where Connecticut residents receive assisted living services. The MRC in Connecticut is not a licensed healthcare facility. It's a private residential setting where the resident already has the right to purchase and use technology for any purpose. Including the MRCs is not necessary and could be viewed by some of the residents as intrusive. So we respectfully request that the MRC be removed from this bill. Again, we've offered detailed comments with our testimony. And we look forward to contributing to the development and passage of this statutory policy that protects the price, privacy, and dignity of all nursing home residents. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Miss Morelli. Um, Representative Yu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mag, for your testimony. Um, this may be concurrent, but I believe there's a bill. Uh, on the infrastructure recommendations which included, um. Uh, you know, the, the capacity for these internet. Devices, you know, the, the bandwidth to be uh, included in internet as a service. Um, as an essential service, and I believe that bill might be before public health. Um, but my question to you, Mag, is if, if there is another provision that does uh, expand on, um. Like a dedicated grant to improving infrastructure for this purpose, would you support that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great. I think that's what. I, I, I don't want to speak for the chairs, but I think uh, that is, was I thinking on why this. Basically centered on it as a right and not the implementation of it?
Yeah, right. There is, there is a provision in this bill that talks about um, applying for a certificate of need to get the capital needs improvements done in the way the current rate structure works. Um, for nursing homes, that's not a guarantee that you'll receive it and then it comes throughout the life of the, life of whatever you're, you've invested in, in the rate to the Medicaid, um, through the Medicaid system. And so we're saying what came out of the um, working group that we all worked on was the idea of infrastructure grants so that we could. Um, you know, implement this right away. Um, I think a lot of the buildings are not going to need an upgrade. We found that through this pandemic, several buildings had to go through an upgrade just to be able to provide the visitation. Um, and still, you know, these are older buildings. They have some spots in the building that just, you know, the internet doesn't reach. Um, you know, they want to provide a separate service outside of their secured service that they use for the medical records. So the upgrades are going to be needed. And we're just, you know, it now seems to be the time where if we could use some grant funding, even from the COVID relief funding. Um, to be able to provide it to do the upgrades, it would be worth it. And much, much easier for nursing homes. Sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. Uh, and through you, Madam Chair, I was just going to sort of, um. You know, parenthetically flag those new relief funds for infrastructure upgrades that included. Um, you know, internet capacity as an essential service for, for visitation and, and to, you know, resident rights. Um, and, and I don't know if it works to. Plug that into this bill or not, but, um, but yeah, we're, we're on the same page with that. Absolutely. It's, it's definitely needed and there's. Definitely needs to be a new way of investing in that. And uh, with new funds and maybe not through the. Medicaid reimbursement rate, uh, you know, we, we did talk about that, but, um. Like I say, I don't know where that landed in terms of this bill or another bill, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Yu. Uh, I don't see any other hands, so thank you very much, Meg, for joining us tonight and waiting so long to testify.
Well, thank you. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
I feel the same. Thank you. Um, next, we have Anna Dorogazi, followed by Josephine Miller.
Hi, hello. Um, good evening and congratulations, Madam Chair. Um, thanks to you and members of the Aging Committee for the opportunity to join you today. My name's Anna Dorogazi and I am one of the Policy Directors at ARP Connecticut. Um, I'd like to express ARP Connecticut's support for House Bill six-five-five-two. An Act Concerning the Rights of Residents in Long-Term Care Facilities to Use the Technology of Their Choice. Um, Senate Bill nine-three-seven-three, an act strengthening the voice of residents and family councils. And Senate Bill nine-seven-five, an act strengthening the Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care Facility Residents. Um, this week marks the one-year anniversary of when Connecticut banned visit, banned visitation in nursing homes due to COVID-nineteen. Um, in the past year, I've heard devastating stories from nursing home residents and their loved ones about what that decision meant for their lives and how traumatic. loved ones about what that decision meant for their lives and how traumatic it was and how they felt helpless to what was going on. Um, I know you've heard those stories as well, and many of you have had your own personal connection to this issue. Um, I just briefly want to express my condolences to Representative Belinski for the loss you shared um at the beginning of the hearing. Nothing on today's agenda makes COVID-19 go away or gives back what people have lost during the past year, but I think Senate Bill nine seven three, an act strengthening the voice of residents and family councils, acknowledges a mistake that I know I sometimes make as an advocate and you sometimes make as policymakers, uh, which is that we don't always put the right seats at the table. Older and disabled people can speak for themselves, and their families can speak for themselves, and we need to provide adequate accommodations to make sure that they have a say in conversations about their own health, safety, and futures. Senate Bill nine seven three would help this happen, and ARP strongly supports its passage. We also strongly support House Bill six five five two, which would give nursing home residents the ability to use cameras and other forms of technology in their rooms. Um, I'd ask members of the committee to consider all of the different types of technology that you use in your own homes and lives and how those devices make your life easier, give you peace of mind, and help you stay connected to the people you love. Nursing home residents deserve to have access to that same widely available technology in the place that they call home. More than a dozen states already permit cameras in nursing home rooms, um either through law or state regulation, or um there are a couple of states that have programs that actually loan cameras out to residents. Um, the first law explicitly permitting cameras was passed in Texas twenty years ago, and new laws permitting the use of cameras in nursing homes went into effect in 2020 in both Minnesota and Missouri. Um, our written testimony includes more detail in support of this bill and includes a few recommendations for how we think the bill could um be improved to better meet residents' needs. Um, I also want to acknowledge that this bill does touch on some complicated issues related to privacy and who bears certain responsibilities associated with the technology, and we really appreciate everyone who's been involved in trying to work through these issues and improve um this bill and the bill language over the past few years. Um, finally, ARP supports Senate Bill nine seven five, which strengthens the Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care Facility Residents. And we see this bill as a necessary companion to House Bill six five five two. Um, six five five two gets into the nuts and bolts. Oh, sure, thanks. Um, gets into the nuts and bolts of how cameras and technology would be used in nursing homes, but it's Senate Bill nine seven five that codifies the use of that technology as a right and gives residents and families recourse if that right is denied. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to share share our thoughts and our comments. Um, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorogazi. Are there any questions from the members? No, thank you for your testimony and thank you for remaining with us so long. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Our final uh person to testify this evening that's listed is Josephine Miller.
Uh, Josephine is not available, but we will recog- uh, Joan is the next one to speak. She's the last speaker.
Joan?
Yes, hi. Um, my name's Joan Clotzenard. I am a resident of Connecticut, and I am speaking in support of Bill number six five five three, but I do recognize what David has said, that we need to, we really need to fix because certain parts, because I see what he's talking about about the tax issue. But first, let me just explain why I'm why I support this. Um, but because there's a lot more going on than just the liens. I am in an illegal mortgage that was banned in two thousand and two and then placed in a more a loan modification for five years that I did with flying colors, but the bank refused to convert it to a permanent loan. Subsequent to that, I was then placed in a secret loan program to prevent me from obtaining a proper loan modification. I am now, we have now gone through thirteen attempts at loan modifications since two thousand and ten. That does not include the five-year loan modification that I did with flying colors uh prior to two thousand, excuse me, two thousand and thirteen. At any rate, I I even tried filing a federal lawsuit against the banks, but I couldn't afford an attorney. The pro bono attorney I was given, unfortunately, the minute he saw the amount of evidence I have, did not want to handle the case. We tried to go to mediation. The afterwards, the attorney admitted to me that, number one, they never came to the table to mediate. They were only there to do to get what they wanted. Number two, that the the mediation they were proposing and the loan they were proposing was illegal. It had a um, a uh balloon payment at the end of it, and he advised me not to do it. Later on, when I went to go pick up my records from him, he advised me that he really couldn't do very much, because if he fought them and won, if he was up against them or working with them on another mortgage, they would definitely hardball him and he would get nothing. So he could not really help me. This is a travesty, because we're doing this now going on numerous years. The loan we were put in by Countrywide that is illegal was put, we were put into it four years after the state of Connecticut banned it in two thousand and two. We were putting into it in two thousand and six. We didn't even know it was illegal till at least a decade later. Now, back to this bill, which while I understand what Marcus uh David has said, I think there's got to be some kind of taxpayer relief program for seniors. I mean, there is some, but if you don't qualify, you don't get it. If you don't know to qual- to apply for it, you don't get it, and that's a problem. Also, we have to remember that many of these people that are over fifty, we're we're actually dis- age discriminated out of jobs, so whatever jobs we can get are very low income. Um, absolutely, I I understand that they need to be able to collect this tax money.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. You're reaching the end of your three minutes. Please just
That's fine. I understand that, but for threatening foreclosure, there's no reason that if the House has value, that, you know, if they need to get a lien or they need to get assist- they need to help the families get assistance to either be able to pay their loan or to pay their taxes or have the taxes escrowed into the mortgage, um, there are so many other ways that we could do this without foreclosing and causing somebody like my husband and I, who are over sixty, to lose our home. We don't even know what's going on with our mortgage because it's illegal.
Good morning, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Representative Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and Joan, and I'm sorry to hear your story. Um, and I was looking in the submitted testimony, and I unless I'm missing it, I did not see your testimony submitted. Have you submitted testimony?
Yes, Jo has it. I can update it again, but in my testimony, I have the entire chronology of my of our situation, so you can read everything by date and a single sentence, maybe it's one sentence, maybe two, explaining everything.
So have you been on for a while and listening um to the other uh uh folks who testified? Did you hear uh Matt Barrett? Um, did you hear his testimony?
I don't think I did. I came in a little bit late, um, but I did hear Lou Roman, I heard Geraldine Gray. Um, there might have been one other person I also heard. And I do, while I support the bill, I think David may be right, after I heard what he had to say, that we really need to figure out how to tweak it. I think the idea is there. It just needs some tweaking to protect the states' coffers that they need money to keep their towns running, but still provide some kind of assistance to seniors who are having a problem paying their taxes.
All right, well, I look forward to seeing your written testimony, and thank you very much for coming in this evening and staying so long. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any more members who would like to ask a question? I don't see any hands raised. Thank you very much, Ms. Miller, for um staying on so long. We're sorry that we kept you so long, and we appreciate you coming to testify before us today. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. My husband's the only one who's really complaining because he wanted dinner. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
You too, thank you. Mr. Clark, have we exhausted the list of participants for this public hearing?
We have.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for attending and being flexible with the new technology. Um, and to, and I'd like to remind members, if there are any issues that are concerns or amendments that you're interested in, please get in touch with the uh chairs and the ranking members and to let us know uh tonight before tomorrow morning. Um, I would also like to know if someone would like to make a motion to join tonight's public hearing.
So move Representative Hughes.
Second, Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Representative Hughes and Representative uh Wilson. I now declare this public hearing closed.